Good afternoon and welcome to City Council's public hearing. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1545. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning Article One Introduction and Establishment, Chapter 902 zoning districts in general to add inclusionary zoning and zoning. Article Two Base Zoning District, Chapter 903 Residential Zoning Districts. To amend minimum lot sizes. Article Three Overlay Zoning Districts. To remove 90704A IZO Inclusionary Housing Overlay District. Article Four Development Standards. To amend 91507 Performance Point System. Article Two Base Zoning, Chapter 905 Special Purpose Districts. Article Four Planning Districts, Chapter 908 Public Realm Districts. Chapter 909 Planned Development Districts. Article Five Use Regulations, Chapter 911 Primary Uses. Chapter 912 Accessory Uses and Structures. Chapter 913 Use Exceptions and Conditions Not Listed in Use Table. Article Six Development Standards. Chapter 914 Parking Loading and Access. Chapter 916 Residential Compatibility Standards. Article Eight Review and Enforcement. Chapter 922 Development Review Procedures. To remove minimum off-street parking from the zoning code. Article Five Use Regulations, Chapter 912 Accessory Uses and Structures. Article Nine Measurements and Definitions. Chapter 925 Measurements and Chapter 926 Definitions.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the Planning Commission for an overview, just like a couple of quick housekeeping rules, we have ninety, ninety-seven registered speakers. To try to keep this moving as efficiently as possible, I'm gonna call three names at a time. So after the first name is called, come up and give your remarks, or if you're online, come off of mute. But I'm calling three names at a time so that hopefully you can then be immediately prepared to give your remarks. The other thing I would say is you are completely within your rights to utilize all three minutes of your time. However, if your remarks are substantially similar to a prior speaker's, you can also feel free to say something like, "I agree with the prior speaker's comments, therefore I'm in opposition," or "I'm in favor of said legislation." And that'll also help us keep moving. I think that's it for now. So with that, we'll turn it over to the Planning Department.
Sure, thanks, Councilman. Andrew Dash, Deputy Director, Department of City Planning.
Corey Lehman, Zoning Administrator, City Planning.
Paul Consillo, Planning Manager, City Planning.
And we will try to quickly walk through the series of amendments. So the series of amendments is around the introduction of legislation around accessory dwelling units. It changes to our parking standards to essentially remove, you know, minimum parking requirements and inclusionary zoning, and an expansion of the inclusionary zoning citywide. So, you know, how we got here, just as a very brief background, you know, this really started back in 2016 with the city's Affordable Housing Task Force. At that time, you know, it was really the first look at the city's housing and the housing needs across the city. It did come up with a series of recommendations, including the introduction of the Housing Opportunity Fund, you know, some work that we had done on Lytech, and also the first recommendation for inclusionary zoning. That was followed up by work in 2017 with, where the city hired and brought on Grounded Solutions to assist us in outlining the parameters of an inclusionary zoning program citywide. It did at the time create a summary for a recommended citywide mandatory inclusionary zoning program as a part of that work in 2017, and did financial modeling to that. Since then, from a zoning perspective, the city has, you know, has done two things. It has done an incentive-based inclusionary zoning through the Performance Point System that was initially started in the Uptown Public Realm District when that was created, expanded into the Riv, the Riverfront Zoning District as it was created, and then further in 2023 with the passage of the Urban Center and Residential Mixed-Use Districts as a part of the implementation of the Oakland Plan. It was expanded there as well. In addition to that incentive-based program, there is a mandatory program that the city has done, starting through work in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, initially created as an interim planning overlay district in 2019, which was made permanent in 2021, expanded into Bloomfield and Polish Hill in 2022, and Oakland in 2023. Around that time, the city did an update to the Housing Needs Assessment in 2022, which noted the things that are on the slide, that, you know, there is displacement that was occurring between the time of the first Housing Needs Assessment and the 2022 update, that, you know, even though we are seeing new higher-income jobs come into the city, it is in turn, you know, also raising the median rent. That is causing, you know, issues relative to Pittsburgh residents being cost-burdened and, you know, needing protection, and that there is a need for more supply of housing in the city of Pittsburgh. And so, you know, looking to see a need for both market rate and restricted affordable housing to be able to stabilize median rent, as well as to try to positively affect, you know, reverse the displacement that we were seeing over the five years prior to that work. So, you know, those recommendations were around land use subsidy and the protection of tenants' rights. Obviously, the work that we're bringing forth in the zoning code is part of the land use As a part of this process, again, this kind of goes back quite some time, prior to the Planning Commission, you know, around this package of amendments, we did do, you know, a series of neighborhood-based engagements, you know, with communities across the city. In addition to that, we did, you know, outreach, you know, through not only the Housing Needs Assessment Working Group, it was being created, and these recommendations were being created, but also with you all as council members, with advocates, and with developers as part of this process. That engagement has been ongoing since the Planning Commission, you know, primarily, you know, with council and advocates. So jumping into the three components of the bill, the first one we'll talk about is inclusionary In Pittsburgh, it is, you know, a policy that requires and incentivizes housing developers to create a percentage of income-restricted affordable housing as a part of new development. I already kind of stated where that occurs across the city. Presently, there is the option for developers to do so through one of three options. The first one is to provide 10% of the units onsite. The second is that there is an off-site option, you know, however that number increases to 12%. Or there's a third option through a partnership with a nonprofit developer that can be, it could be the three ways that inclusionary units can be provided as a part of a development. Under the inclusionary zoning overlay districts, so the mandatory program that we have, you know, this shows the 216 units that are either built or in the pipeline. You know, you see 116 of those in Lawrenceville since its inception. Oakland, you know, has had the program since 2023 and has seen 100 of those units. Given the public investment in an affordable unit, that is the equivalent of, we calculated it's just, just under $90 million in, you know, in construction costs for, you know, for affordable housing through those 216 units. And, you know, so what's being proposed is a new citywide program. And so, you know, formerly there was the, you know, again, the incentive-based or mandatory, you know, overlay. We did do a lot of research through other cities in trying to look at, you know, obviously with the expansion of a program citywide, we need to think about it a little bit differently, given the different market types in the city, given the different situations in the city. You know, and so, the program that, you know, that is being proposed in the code amendment does keep many of the inclusionary zoning standards from the IZO, but really the intention is to, you know, through the public process that we've had and other outreach that we've had, to really dig down and create some greater flexibility in the program, and create additional incentives to make sure that the program works. And, you know, because again, the intention of this is to be able to, you know, not only increase the supply of housing writ large in the city, but also create opportunities for affordable housing. So, you know, allowing some changes, and this was, you know, some work that we had seen from cities like Portland, you know, that allow some flexibility in how many units are provided, if there are adjustments to the bedrooms. This is, you know, kind of meeting a need that was identified in our Housing Needs Assessment for looking for, you know, being opportunities to be able to encourage more family-sized, restricted, affordable units. We wanted to expand, you know, what an off-site, you know, what an off-site development would look like if they were providing it that way. There were a series of development bonuses that are being proposed as a part of this. You know, this is similar to, you know, using the Performance Point System kind of incentives and applying those citywide for residential developments of greater than 20 units. You know, so allowing, you know, allowing additional height, allowing additional FAR, where that, where floor area ratio FAR is, you know, a requirement in the zoning code. One thing that we heard from the development community specifically was around the, you know, the step-back requirements that we have at upper stories of buildings, being a restriction to being able to, you know, create kind of consistent floor plates and the additional costs that that provided, you know, in addition to some of the, you know, additional costs that would be, you know, kind of taken on by creating affordable units. And so we did relax the step-back requirements. We also relaxed residential compatibility standards, you know, in saying that they were not applicable for these developments that were providing inclusionary zoning. Some ways that, you know, if this were in place, that it would, you know, impact developments that, you know, that many people are aware of, you know, there was development proposed on the SureSave site in Bloomfield on Liberty Avenue. This was, you know, one where there were variances to height and other density standards that ultimately were denied by the zoning board. You know, given the bonuses and the incentives that we're providing here, a project like this would be, would have been permitted by right. And so instead of going through the uncertainty of a zoning board process, you know, it would have been something that would have been able to be built and create both housing units more generally and affordable housing units. Another example is, you know, the Shakespeare, you know, Giant Eagle site. This one had to go through a zoning change, but in addition to that, it had to go through special exception and variances. And again, you know, the process in leading up to, you know, again, the idea is here is to give more certainty to these types of projects and allow them to be built and permitted by right. Other changes, we'll actually talk about this first one, because in changes that we've been working with City Council on, you know, the initial proposal that went to Planning Commission had those rental units being permanently affordable, I think we're discussing some potential changes there. You know, tying the costs of off-site units to a construction index and understanding that construction costs change and how we manage that. You know, there, you know, in the changes that were made, you know, there was the removal, given, you know, some of the ways in which the LRT, the tax abatement controls relative to downtown, exempting the Golden Triangle sub-districts A through D. And, you know, although we'll talk a little bit later about, you know, potential changes, most of which do kind of revolve around inclusionary zoning, I'm gonna turn it over to Corey and have him talk through accessory dwelling units.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy to do that. We'll go to the next slide. Thanks. All right, so an accessory dwelling unit is a residential unit that is accessory or secondary to the primary dwelling unit. So an accessory, it's all right, so an accessory is, in zoning terms, something that is subordinate to an area and intent from the primary use. Accessory uses can range from, you know, can cover all kinds of things that we see typically on properties. Go ahead, next slide. So ADUs as accessories, they create new housing options and opportunities for affordability within the existing neighborhood fabric, and ADUs can come in a number of different types and flavors. So why, why should Pittsburgh consider allowing ADUs citywide? Because accessory dwelling units are more sustainable than traditional housing developments, because the policy allows you to reuse portions of an existing structure. Or when an accessory dwelling unit is detached, they have a smaller footprint and require less materials. They can be located on existing, already developed lots. They can provide new housing options closer to jobs, and they can be in walkable areas that are accessible to transit, reducing vehicle and reduced vehicle trips. ADUs cost less to build and retrofit, which means they can be rented out at a more affordable rate in neighborhoods where homeownership and rents are prohibitive. ADUs allow options and opportunities for multiple generations of a family, aging relatives, or extended family to live on the same property comfortably and independently. ADUs can be an opportunity for a homeowner to age in place and allows them to retain their property while downsizing and opening up opportunities for additional income. And finally, they can open opportunities for homebuyers and homeowners to offset mortgage costs by having supplemental income. In this legislation, ADUs would be permitted citywide as accessory to residential, community center, and religious assembly uses. They would not be required to be owner-occupied, and they'd be limited to two ADUs per residential lot. The standards for ADUs are that they're limited to 1,000 square feet maximum per ADU. They're allowed to be two stories and not taller than 30 feet, allowed to be built within the rear and side yard setbacks as an administrator's exception, following the same standards as other accessory structures. They're permitted by right for conversion of an existing garage when the footprint isn't expanded further into a setback, and they're permitted by right as a vertical addition to a garage that already exists in a setback as an administrator's exception in cases where the garage butts away. So where have ADUs worked before? In Seattle, they reformed their ADU ordinance in 2019 to remove initially prohibitive and unnecessary limits like owner occupancy and parking requirements. In response to that, there was a subsequent increase in permitting from 143 in 2018 to around 1,000 per year in 2022 and 2023. San Diego made several updates to simplify its ADU ordinance between 2017 and 2020. That resulted in an increase from less than 500 in 2018 to over 3,000 in 2023. Incentive programs in their accessory dwelling unit law have led to nearly 300 deed-restricted affordable ADUs since 2021, and in both cities, more ADUs are being built than new single-family homes are. So Pittsburgh has many examples of historic ADUs that fit within the fabric of the city and provide all of the benefits that the citywide ADU amendments would afford to everyone. Just a few examples on the slides, but I think pretty much everyone can know kind of in their neighborhoods where there are already historically occurring accessory dwelling units.
Corey, talk about parking reform next, which is another section of this bill. So to kind of set what the existing conditions are in the city of Pittsburgh, the 1958 zoning code for the city was the first time there was implemented off-street parking requirements. As is well known, most of the city of Pittsburgh was actually built prior to this requirement. So essentially what we're trying to do is to almost return the zoning code to what it was prior to the city's peak population. So what we're trying to do is reduce or remove entirely off-street parking minimums in the city. This has been an effort that City Council has taken up in recent years. We've slowly done it through both the Riverfront zoning, the Oakland zoning, and a few others, including Uptown. In recent years, several cities across the United States, including Buffalo, Minneapolis, Austin, Raleigh, among several others that have reduced minimum off-street parking requirements. So we would not be the first city doing this, and we have a good amount of study and knowledge to know how those experiences in other cities have gone to see how that would impact the city of Pittsburgh. What we have seen is that these changes have resulted in more walkable mixed-use neighborhoods. It's helped to lower the cost of housing by both reducing the development costs and also making it easier for new units to be built in these cities. Additionally, particularly given the historic fabric of the city, this also helps to make it easier for adaptive reuse of existing buildings that were built prior to any parking requirements. So again, just broadly what is being proposed here, it is removal of parking, off-street parking minimum requirements for all uses in all districts. We are also working to, reworking of the existing parking maximum requirements. So we're trying to simplify this, this section, which is to change it from requirements around specific use types to more broader use categories. And then we're also setting the parking maximum tiers based off of access to frequent transit rather than by, through the zoning districts. Additionally, we're allowing for an administrative approval to exceed these parking maximums by being able to pay into the Mobility Trust Fund rather than having to go seek a variance before the zoning board. Also adding in the requirement for Transportation Demand Management for developments above a certain size threshold. We're also having the, what is currently a duplicative ADA parking review in the zoning code to allow that to just align strictly with what the building code requirement is. We are also adding in a provision for, in the case of zero-parked buildings, to be able to provide accessible pickup and drop-off locations and have those identified. Additionally, looking to reduce new surface accessory parking in some of the more walkable mixed-use districts. This is similar to what those requirements are in the new mixed-use districts in Oakland. And then to be clear, what this ordinance doesn't do, or what, I'm sorry, what this ordinance does do, sorry, is to simplify the code, reduce both the time for review for both on the applicant's side as well as the reviewer's side, because we do currently have a number of parking reductions where applicants are able to reduce the requirements, but they're all sometimes hidden in the code. It requires the reviewer to have to explain to the applicant how they're able to reduce these. And so this just helps to simplify the process, helps to improve review times, and we're allowing the market to decide how much parking is needed. This also, again, to recall, this is helping to reuse existing buildings that were built prior to parking minimum requirements. We're also looking at meeting transportation holistically rather than simply through driving, through automobile use, and to allow for more optimal use of urban space. What this ordinance doesn't do, this doesn't, we're not removing any legally existing parking spaces. If there are certificates of occupancy for existing, whether they be surface parking lots or just any type of parking, those are permitted to remain. This also does not enact much greater restrictions on car parking than already exists. This also does not prohibit the building of new parking spaces or structures. Commercial parking garages and the like are able to continue to be built. And, you know, we looked at these parking maximum requirements, looking at recent developments, looking at how much parking is provided there, to ensure that what those, what is typically being provided, we will not be restricting below that. So this, we don't see kind of new developments going over the new parking maximums, given what existing developments are providing. This also does not create a parking free-for-all. What we see in some of the reduced parking areas and parking exempt areas, that those developments are still providing new parking spaces, you know, this typically is either just, they're simply meeting what the parking, what the market is demanding from parking, or what banks and lenders financing these new projects are requiring. This is just to show typically where the more frequent transit in Pittsburgh is, and you can see those outside of these areas would not be subject to the more stringent requirements. We also are taking into account geography disparities. If, you know, say you're within the parking transit, but the actual transit line is, you know, down the hillside, that is obviously not practical to reach that, and we are providing certain provisions to be able to prevent situations like that. So again, some examples of what this looks like for multi-unit residential. In the high-frequency transit, you know, you're, again, you're talking about areas like Oakland, areas like Lawrenceville. One dwelling unit per unit, or one parking space per dwelling unit, which is already what the typical requirement is in those areas. And everywhere else, it's two per dwelling unit. And this is just for multifamily, for things like single-family homes, duplexes, those are, those are often higher maximums, so you're able to get more parking spaces for those types of uses. For commercial uses, one per 500 square feet in high-frequency transit areas, or one per 175 square feet everywhere else. So typically, you would see that in a 10,000-square-foot retail store, 20 spaces would need to be, or are permitted in the high-frequency transit areas versus 57 everywhere else. And again, to talk about the Mobility Improvement Trust, so if someone were to provide parking in excess of that parking maximum, they do have this administrative approval option, which reduces the uncertainty in a project and reduces the time needed to go before the zoning board. They're able to pay a fee per space over the maximum into the Mobility Trust Fund, and in turn, what that fund is going towards is to improve mobility options in those neighborhoods where the development is proposed. Again, there is still the option, if an applicant wanted to seek a variance from the zoning board, that is still available to them. Lastly, with the Transportation Demand Management is something that is being implemented in the zoning code. I should point out that the city already currently requires a TDM plan for large-scale projects. So this is simply helping to formalize that requirement in the zoning code, providing a more transparent point system, which is, which is intended to make this easier for developments to comply. They're able to see, based off of the number of units or number of square footage they're providing, how many points they would need to achieve that, and how they'd be able to achieve that. Next slide, please. And then just other issues addressed in this. So off-site accessory parking is permitted. Currently, we require a special exception to the zoning board. This would just be permitted by right. We're also, in certain districts, reducing the allowed amount of surface parking, but there is still, and prohibiting surface parking in the Golden Triangle and Riverfront Northshore Zones. There are still options, exceptions to that, similar to what we see in the Oakland zoning districts. Additionally, bicycle parking requirements for all multi-unit residential and commercial developments. And then also just making minor changes to use definitions and standards to reflect the reduction or removal of minimum parking requirements. And lastly, just also permitting mechanized parking options, or the parking carousels that have started to become proposed in areas like the Strip District in Oakland. We want to allow for these structures to be in place without requiring a variance, as we see this as an efficient use of urban space to being able to provide parking.
Great. So just to kind of close out, you know, obviously, this package of amendments, which also included changes to minimum lot sizes, was, received a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission on January 28th. There were some conditions to that recommendation by the commission, which I'll cover shortly, and, you know, the minimum lot size reform, you know, part of the legislation was pulled out as standalone legislation, as Bill 2025-1579, and passed in May. So the conditions of, you know, of the positive recommendation, you know, which planning staff have, you know, worked on amendments to be able to satisfy those conditions, you know, include, you know, as Paul had mentioned, just, you know, right there, the amendment to allow increased height for the parking carousels, changes for the effective date for the Transportation Demand Management, you know, ordinance, that, you know, we would make amendments relative to the step-backs, and, you know, and adds subsections related to existing plans. related to existing plans. Since January, there have been a lot of discussions with city council and otherwise, and others, and we want to be able to continue those conversations, to make sure that, you know, if there are any questions or concerns from council members, that we're able to address those. Some of the things that have been, you know, discussed, you know, are, you know, a return of the affordability term to 35 years, as it is in the, in the present inclusionary zoning ordinance, changing some work on the allowable pricing, as well as how we determine cost, you know, because some of the things that, you know, some of the standards, especially, you know, that we were using previously are no longer available. A big piece here is the discussion of allowing off-site inclusionary units to be existing construction. So, instead of having a developer or an applicant do new construction off-site to satisfy the inclusionary zoning standard, to be clear, that that could be done by creating restricted affordable housing, you know, as a part of existing, existing units in a neighborhood. Making sure that we're not creating a conflict with things that are getting, like low-income housing tax credits. And so, although those affordability levels are a little bit different than the inclusionary zoning standards, want to make sure that, you know, the intent of projects that are receiving Lytech funding is to be affordable, affordable housing with a restricted term. So, making sure that they are able to access the benefits of, you know, of the code and comply with the IZ, with the IZ. And, you know, and, you know, and lastly, you know, the discussion of potential development of a payment-in-lieu program serves as an additional option for meeting the requirements. So, again, the big picture here is really, you know, is one of several steps to really affect the opportunity to, you know, to create more housing supply here in the city of Pittsburgh. You know, we've discussed, you know, how accessory dwelling units obviously create that opportunity, how changes to the parking standards allow for greater, greater flexibility in, in developing residential, you know, properties, and making sure that we're able to do so in a way that also has restricted affordable, affordability as a part of that. And that's where the inclusionary zoning changes come in as well. So, you know, really trying to, you know, kind of do that in a way that really reflects the built fabric of the city and its neighborhoods as they are, and understanding that even outside of this package of amendments, there is still going to be additional work that's going to need to be done. Some of those recommendations are in the housing needs assessment to be able to achieve those goals. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Director, if you'd be willing to send that to all members, I think that'd be helpful.
Yes, I'll do that right now.
And let the record reflect that we've been joined by all members of council. With that, we'll now move on to our speakers. So, first is Steve Mazza, followed by Andrea Boikowicz, followed by Chris Rosselo.
First, I just want to thank everybody for their hard work on this issue. It's been a tough one for a long time. I understand that, but my name's Steve Mazza, 2912 Zephyr Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA. Council representative for Eastern Atlantic State Regional Council, carpenters, vice president of Pittsburgh Building Trades, vice president of Labor Council, blah, 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 all that stuff. So, number one, ADUs, no. So, we're gonna let people just build buildings in a backyard, 1,000 square feet with a, go, come over in Sheridan, I'll show you one, right down the street, extension cord running in the window, people living inside it. So, I say no to that, I say no to all this. Because people don't understand construction, people don't understand what's happening in our business. I have 1,000 members in the city of Pittsburgh, I have 5,000 members in and around the city of Pittsburgh, who need work, who pay taxes every single day. We have these developments, Millhouse, Arsenal, Meridian, I could go on and on down the line. People are coming in and not paying taxes. Nobody's even enforcing that. We put, I work with every member here to put things on the books to fix this. I've supported every member here to support this and fix this, but we can't seem to do it. Every building that's being built with affordable units is done by people that aren't paying taxes. And I, I'll challenge anybody to come to me and ask me, I have the proof, I have everything. We do this every single day. And then, you're gonna add this throughout the city, add more junk, more crap? I have over 300 foreclosures in Sheridan, 2008. How many LLCs are over there right now, doing whatever they want, no permits, anything? And then, we want to continue to go down this path? This is about people paying taxes, it's not about status or anybody. We'll organize anybody out there, we'll bring anybody into the carpenters' union. My organization needs jobs. This is about jobs. And if we can't do the right thing here and try to just push this thing through before another administration comes in, I think that's totally unfair. And I'm gonna have to think about who I support in the future, because if you support this, my membership won't allow me to support people that don't support our issues. And that's being fair. And I'm not be, picking on any single person in this room, but this has to be done. This can't be about special interest groups trying to push something through to get community benefits agreements in their neighborhood that collect the money, and then put that towards their organizations and come out and vote for something they don't even understand. You know, it's getting very tiring for me, I'm very frustrated. I've been working on this thing with Corey O'Connor since 2019 with Pittsburgh Construction Task Force, and we still can't get anything done. Nobody wants to be a transformational leader, and I'm disappointed in a lot of things, I am. I'm willing to work with everybody and get this thing done, but until we do something, I can't, it's, I'm just gonna go out there and do what I have to do for my organization, my membership, and the building trades and everybody I work for and labor. So, whatever you want to say, it's fine, call me up, challenge me to anything, I'll challenge anybody in this room to what I said. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Boikowicz, I'm a resident of Central Oakland and the executive director of Oakland Planning and Development Corporation. I'm here to lend my voice to your many, many constituents who are asking council to take action to support the development of more affordable housing in our city. Over the past 45 years, OPDC has built and rehabbed hundreds of housing units in Oakland, both for sale and for rent, including a taxpaying Lytech at the top of West Oakland. We currently own and manage over 100 rental units in South and West Oakland. We have years of direct experience with the Oakland housing market, which encompasses the broadest demographic spectrum of owners and renters, every housing type and residential zoning district that exists in Pittsburgh. That variety of residence and housing options is a big part of what makes Oakland vibrant and resilient, and supporting that kind of diversity and inclusivity is a big priority for us. By itself, the market does not deliver diversity. Real estate developers build in response to demand, and typically, that demand is pretty specific. This is why in neighborhoods where a lot of housing is built in a short period of time, it all tends to look alike. Built in sufficient quantity, it can have the tendency to overwhelm the local retail and service markets, and as a result, displacement and gentrification can happen very quickly. One of the genius aspects of inclusionary zoning is that it makes room in new construction for different income brackets and household configurations. It reduces segregation and increases opportunity. In a place like Oakland, IZ can reduce commuter traffic and make higher education more accessible. Paired with the elimination of mandatory parking minimums and the judicious use of accessory dwelling units, it can produce a greener, more walkable neighborhood. There are incentives and subsidies built into the inclusionary zoning program. City code supports a buy-right tax payment for projects supplying inclusionary units. It encourages property managers to accept housing choice vouchers in IZ units, which makes it possible for them to charge market rents. In Oakland's new base zones, urban center mixed-use and residential mixed-use, IZ affordability can force height bonuses that many new projects are eagerly claiming. These are all ways the city is ready to partner with private development to expand housing opportunities and build more vibrant communities. I invite you to extend these opportunities to the rest of the city. Having one set of rules in place everywhere makes the city more accessible and attractive to residential development. Making room in our city for the people who work and study here makes Pittsburgh a more desirable and welcoming place to live. Please vote yes to approve the approved housing, proposed housing needs assessment amendments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chris Rosselo, resident of the Spring Garden neighborhood in the North Side and policy director for Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group. Pittsburgh is facing a housing affordability crisis that we all can ignore. Families who work full-time jobs, teachers, home health workers, childcare workers, bus drivers, retail employees, many of them union workers, can't afford the rents. Without action, we will continue to lose working families and communities of color. Pittsburgh has already lost more than 10,000 black residents over the past decade, and just yesterday, the devastating fire in Squirrel Hill took away even more housing units, underscoring how fragile and limited our housing supply truly is. When we lose homes, we cannot afford to replace them only with luxury rents. Inclusionary zoning is not radical, it's reasonable. It's about making sure growth in this city includes keeping current residents and not just recruiting those who can pay top-dollar rents. Opponents of IZ often frame their resistance in economic terms, but let's be real, it's a form of NIMBYism. They don't want working families as neighbors. The truth is, developers are capable of filling financing gaps. They do it all the time, with tax credits, grants, layered public subsidies. And the city can and should foster cooperation with developers to make these projects pencil out. But if developers refuse IZ, even with these subsidy tools available, then we have to admit the opposition isn't about dollars and cents, it's about fear. Fear of low-income families, classism, it's promoting gentrification. Inclusion in area zoning is fair, it applies only to larger projects, 20 units or more, which are already projects most likely to receive some of the public subsidies I mentioned. If taxpayer dollars are helping these projects, then the public deserves a return in the form of affordable units that are inclusive, not restrictive. IZ is not anti-development, it's pro-fair development, it's pro-community. IZ will stabilize neighborhoods, create mixed-income communities, ensure that Pittsburgh remains a city for everyone, not just the wealthy few. Council has a chance to stand on the side of fairness, inclusion, and long-term stability. I urge you to support this housing needs assessment package, including IZ. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Maddie McGrady, Amy Zeiss, and then Christopher Bean.
Hello, council. My name is Maddie McGrady, I'm a renter in Highland Park, zip code 15206, and I'm speaking today as a co-chair of the Pittsburgh Housing Justice Table. We are a coalition of organizations and advocates who know that housing is a fundamental human right, and who are working together to win meaningful change for housing justice in Pittsburgh, especially for those most impacted by the housing crisis. Study after study in the last 10 years have shown that the greatest housing shortage in Pittsburgh is of deeply affordable units accessible to households earning 50% of the area median income or below, and those folks are being pushed out of our city. And what the people of this city have said clearly and consistently in response to these findings is that we want policies that require developers to help us meet our affordability targets, and that protect our long-term residents in our communities from being displaced and priced out of the city. The suite of zoning amendments before council today have been extensively researched and carefully tailored to Pittsburgh, and they received overwhelming public support and a positive recommendation from planning commission in late January. That was nearly eight months ago, and in those eight months, our coalition has been a partner to council, and we've worked in good faith and with immense patience to address your concerns, in particular, you council member, Strasburger, in order to reach a compromise. That compromise is here, and the time to move on it is now, without further delay. This policy will help to create the deeply affordable units that we need the most, facilitate mixed-income communities, and reduce displacement of long-term residents, especially black residents, as our city grows and changes. It's time to get this done, so we can move on and pass the entire needs assessment, and so that we can keep Pittsburgh home for everyone. Vote yes to IZ and pass the entire needs assessment package. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, I'm Karen Henry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you for your time today, council. My name is Amy Zeiss, I'm a homeowner in the H V neighborhood, I live at 1305 Orangewood Avenue. While inclusionary zoning policies are often pitched to the public as serving a laudable goal, which is to build mixed-income housing, the wealth of data available of the effects of IZ in Pittsburgh and other cities alike show overwhelmingly that IZ does not achieve the goal of building affordable housing, but rather, it cycles new construction. The mayor's proposal shifts the cost burden for financing affordable units to renters. This is undeniable, and the insistence that this proposal holds developers accountable, quote-unquote, is very revealing. Because for some people, IZ is about punishing developers and limiting growth in our city, not about addressing affordability. We've all seen firsthand how IZ mandates kill new homes. From the SureSave site that was brought up earlier, which fell through the cracks ultimately not because of zoning, but unattainable affordability mandates, to the proposed project at the Hare Station in Colish Hill, which was downsized from 31 to 19 homes. When affordability is mandated and not achievable, as builders would say, it, quote, "doesn't pencil out," everyone loses. The citywide inclusionary zoning policy tucked away in this package is a poison pill. Please, do not pass this package. The good parts, parking reform and legalizing ADUs, are meaningful and worth doing. We desperately need to upzone around our best transit assets in order to grow ridership and save PRT from what might be a potential collapse. If we build more homes with fewer parking spaces, new residents will have more affordable and attractive housing offers, options, and that makes them want to live in Pittsburgh. I say this personally because I moved to Pittsburgh, because it was achievable for me to live the kind of car-free, home-owning lifestyle I always dreamt of, but could never afford in California. I believe that Pittsburgh needs to grow, and that it can do so while still being welcoming and also affordable to all. And this is why I'm asking you to reject citywide inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of city council. My name is Chris Bean, and I live in Bloomfield. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on ordinance 1545. There's no way to sugarcoat this. The underfunded inclusionary zoning provisions included in this bill are bad policy and will harm housing affordability in Pittsburgh. While, while it is well-intentioned, the data from cities across the country where this policy has been implemented shows that it is counterproductive and often a failing strategy. Economists will often tell you to tax what you want less of. Well, IZ is a tax on new housing. By forcing developers to rent or sell 10% of their units significantly below market rate, it drives the cost of the remaining units, and more importantly, it disincentivizes building in Pittsburgh at all. In fact, research has consistently shown that for every one affordable unit created through IZ, the policy prevents the construction of three to four additional market-rate units. This policy doesn't just fail to solve the problem, it actively shrinks the overall housing supply, which is the root of our affordability crisis. Instead of passing this policy, that has been proven to be a net negative, I ask you to be bold and focus on what truly works. The most effective way to make housing more affordable for everyone is to make it much easier to build. The true path to affordability is not through mandates on a small number of new projects, but through broad citywide upzoning. I do want to express my wholehearted support for two critical components of this ordinance, the removal of the parking minimums and the legalization of accessory dwelling units. These are smart, smart pro-growth policies that will directly lower the cost of construction and allow for the organic creation of new small-scale housing units within our neighborhoods. They represent a significant step forward in addressing our housing shortage. They would even have a greater impact if paired with broad upzoning across the entire city, allowing duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes by right on every parcel in Pittsburgh. I want to remind council that legalizing multi-unit residential in more than just 23% of our city was the first and most important policy recommendation in the housing needs assessment. In conclusion, ordinance 1544 gets it right with parking and ADUs. Let's pass those provisions and lead the way on smart urban policy. But please, let's remove inclusionary zoning mandates, and instead, pair these reforms with meaningful citywide upzoning to build more houses for everyone. Thank you so much for your time and your service to the city.
Thank you. Our next speakers are David Vats, Nicholas Rizzio, and Jack Billings.
Members of council, my name is David Vats, and I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill. I'm speaking today on behalf of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh, a volunteer-run organization of over 500 renters and homeowners in our region. I'm speaking to you today in strong opposition to the inclusionary zoning bill. IZ has been an abject failure in Pittsburgh, and this bill will simply spread that failure to the whole city. Let's take a look at this failure that is inclusionary zoning. Has IZ made Pittsburgh or the Has IZ made Pittsburgh or the neighborhoods where it exists more affordable? No. Has IZ added a meaningful number of affordable units in Pittsburgh? No. Has IZ decreased segregation in neighborhoods where it exists? Again, no. Has IZ worked in other cities where it's been tried? Once again, no. So it truly begs the question, why are we even considering extending such a failed program across the city? Let's look at the facts. Since it's been implemented in Lawrenceville, home costs there have continued to rise unabated. If we're to believe IZ is an effective policy, we would expect to see lower costs in Lawrenceville, or at least see rent growth slowing. But it's not slowing, it's rising just as fast as the rest of the city. On top of that, the IZ program has produced an exceptionally small number of units since its introduction. In Lawrenceville, in the more than six years since the introduction of the program, it's produced thirty-eight units, or six per year. Even if you count proposed units, it'll only take us a mere five hundred and forty-six more years to wipe out our deficit of affordable units. And to add on to this, IZ has not helped desegregate our neighborhoods. In fact, the data suggests it has contributed to the exact opposite of this. In the years since IZ was implemented, black population of Lawrenceville has cratered by twenty-five percent. Meanwhile, in the South Side, where there was no IZ implemented, the black population has rose by two hundred and three percent in the same time period. We're told to believe IZ will help make Pittsburgh affordable, that it'll create so many more affordable units, that it'll be a meaningful contributor to solving our housing crisis, and that it'll curb displacement of marginalized communities and desegregate our neighborhoods. But the evidence is clear, it doesn't do any of those things. So why are we still here talking about IZ? IZ does only one thing well. It makes politicians and activists feel like they're helping to solve our problem without tackling the actual problem, that we've made it incredibly difficult to build housing in our city. And perversely, IZ doubles down on that. It makes it even harder to build housing, and even more expensive to build housing. Members of Council, this is a bad plan. You should immediately vote this down and get to the hard work of making it easier to build housing in our city. This will lead to broad affordability, economic opportunity, and vitality. I strongly encourage you to vote no on the IZ provisions in this bill. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, members of Council. My name is Nick Rizzio, and I'm a resident of downtown Pittsburgh in Councilman Wilson's district. I am speaking today to urge Council to vote against the inclusionary zoning proposal. Inclusionary zoning is perhaps the preeminent example of how the road to hell is paved with good intentions. I'm sure that everyone in this room shares a genuine desire to make housing more affordable in our city. I'm sure that everyone in this room is concerned about how, year after year, housing becomes more expensive and farther out of reach for more and more families in our city. But the IZ program in Pittsburgh has failed to make good on its promises, and expanding it citywide would be catastrophic for the hopes of getting ourselves out of the shortage that we find ourselves in today. In January of this year, I attended the Marathon Planning Commission hearing on IZ. I was excited to see UCLA researcher Shane Phillips, one of the foremost experts on IZ in the entire country, talk about how IZ could impact Pittsburgh. But instead, the Planning Commission silenced and ignored Phillips. Worst of all, the Gani administration spent less than fifteen minutes talking about IZ at about, I don't know, ten o'clock at night, and they did not meaningfully respond to the concerns that had been raised before and during the hearing. And truthfully, they still haven't responded to those concerns today. In Austin, Texas, a state where IZ is outright illegal, landlords are panicking because market rents are dropping. They're dropping because Austin has built thousands upon thousands of new homes, which created a supply shock that caused rents to go down. Landlords are offering incentives, concessions, rent discounts, and more, because the balance of power has shifted away from them and in favor of tenants. This is what we need to do in Pittsburgh. I will leave it to others to articulate what a successful IZ program could look like. What I do know is that the proposed IZ expansion before us today will not be successful. It would be quite the opposite, an extinction-level event for building more housing in Pittsburgh. I urge Council to vote against this IZ proposal. Thank you all for your time.
My name is Jack Billings, and just this last week, I moved from Squirrel Hill in Councilperson Eric Strasburger's district to downtown in Councilman Bobby Wilson's district. On Bill fifteen forty-five, the section on inclusionary zoning needs more work. It should be amended to make it voluntary per project and fully funded by the city, or if such a compromise can't be reached, it should be stripped out entirely. The section on parking reform, that eliminates minimum parking mandates, is excellent. I have some quibbles about the TDM point system, but overall, it's a good section. The section that allows accessory dwelling units should be less restrictive, but it's a step in the right direction. These two sections should be passed soon, and I'm happy to see them passed as written. The housing crisis in this city is real. We need more housing in Pittsburgh to meet that crisis and to make housing more affordable for everyone. Of the three reports that have been written on the effects of IZ in Pittsburgh, only two, the one from the Controller's Office and the one written by David Vats and myself for Pro-Housing Pittsburgh, attempted to identify the causal impact of IZ on housing production. Both reports estimated that IZ has decreased the amount of housing built in Lawrenceville, with the implication that it has made housing less affordable. Multiple empirical papers have found that without sufficient funding, inclusionary zoning will have the opposite of its intended effect and decrease housing supply and affordability. In my email to City Council containing these comments, I will include an annotated bibliography of these papers, including a one-sentence summary of their findings and where you can find those findings in the paper. The IZ policy, as written, requires a developer to rent or sell a percentage of their units for less than the market rate. This, in effect, is a tax on new construction. Such a tax will make some projects not pencil that otherwise would. Since investors will not invest in a project that will not pencil, and banks will not lend to a project without investors, those projects simply won't be built. This constrains the supply of housing and raises prices for everyone. The incidence of the tax on new construction is paid for primarily by renters. The suggested funding from LRTA is insufficient. The affordability requirements are permanent, while the LRTA funding is both capped and it expires after ten years. The suggestion that housing vouchers provide funding is disingenuous. Each housing dollar we spend housing a family in an expensive new build is one less dollar available to provide much-needed housing support for other families. Relying on housing vouchers to fund IZ does not increase affordable housing, but rather decreases it and rearranges it. We all want more housing and more affordable housing in Pittsburgh. The sections of the bill on parking reform and accessory dwelling units help in that direction, the inclusionary zoning section, as written, hurts that goal. Pass parking reforms, pass accessory dwelling units, either make inclusionary zoning voluntary and fully funded, or remove it entirely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Connor Dickey, Dimitri Black, and Vlad Kaplin.
My name is Connor Dickey, and I live in the Spring Hill area of Councilman Wilson's district. I'm speaking today in opposition to inclusionary zoning. I deeply sympathize with the desire to make housing more affordable, particularly for those with low incomes. Unfortunately, IZ is a policy that has been shown, in our city and others, to make housing affordability worse. There are countless examples of cities around the country who have implemented the policy only to later roll it back due to the disastrous impact. Put simply, IZ imposes an extra cost on the development of any new housing. If you make housing more expensive to build, you will get less new housing. Developers won't just eat the extra cost. And I hate to be the guy that brings up Trump, but this is a lot like his tariffs. If you arbitrarily add new costs, the extra cost has to go somewhere. It will get passed along to the consumers, in this case, renters. And that project, that's only if the project still makes sense to build at all. Often, new housing is simply killed because it doesn't make financial sense to build. We've seen it happening in Lawrenceville, which added housing at a much slower rate than other desirable neighborhoods in our city after adding IZ. I don't want other neighborhoods to end up with the affordability crisis that Lawrenceville is facing. We need broad-based affordability by making it easy to bring new housing online, which reduces the pricing power of landlords, bringing rents down for everyone. Lastly, I just want to mention that Pittsburgh is facing a tight fiscal situation in the coming years. The federal money from the pandemic is gone. Downtown reassessments are killing our tax revenue. We need to be doing everything we can to bring more residents to the city and grow the tax base, or we will have to seriously cut services for residents. IZ will hamper Pittsburgh's growth and harm the city. Please do not put new burdens on housing supply. Block IZ and recommend the other reforms separately, so we can flood the market with new units and create a more affordable city for all Pittsburghers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dimitri Black, and I live in Squirrel Hill South, District Five. It's disappointing to me that we're even here to talk about such a disastrous policy as inclusionary zoning. I've lived in several cities that have gone down this road, and all of them experienced the same consequences. The rents grew at a rate faster than inflation, we saw homeless populations grow, and we saw those on the margins move away to less expensive cities. We have all already witnessed IZ kill the SureSave development in Bloomfield. This is pure populism. All evidence shows that this doesn't work, unless your goal is to stop new housing development and increase rents. And I'm sure that that is the goal of some of the people that are in favor of this policy. I do support the other aspects of this bill, but the inclusionary zoning makes it, counteracts all of the other goods that could come from those policies. I urge Council to vote against this bill. Thank you.
Is Vlad Kaplin with us? Yep.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, members of City Council. My name is Vlad Kaplin, and I'm a resident of East Liberty. Portland, Oregon. Inclusionary zoning implemented 2017, overhauled 2024. Paper of record, The Oregonian. From The Oregonian, seven years after implementation. Builders raced to get permits approved before the rules took effect, delaying any significant effect from the policy. And after those proposals were either built or abandoned, construction slowed dramatically. Minneapolis, Minnesota. Inclusionary zoning implemented 2020. Paper of record, The Star Tribune. From The Star Tribune, two and a half years after implementation. Minneapolis policy mandating affordable housing in new apartment construction shows a significant drop in major projects in the city. Twenty twenty-one was a five-year low for all land use applications in Minneapolis, declining thirty-four percent from 2020. That's fewer applications than during a global pandemic. Baltimore, Maryland. Inclusionary zoning implemented 2009, overhauled 2024. Paper of record, The Baltimore Sun. From The Sun, fifteen years after implementation, talking about the overhaul legislation. Hopes for the new legislation are high, particularly in light of the city's failed past effort to require the development of affordable housing. Baltimore's previous law resulted in the creation of just thirty-four new affordable housing units. To make the requirement more manageable for developers, the City Council approved a tax credit last year. The thirty-year credit will be equal to the difference between the rent paid by an inclusionary housing unit and the market rent offsetting the cost. I didn't cherry-pick these cities, I took them off a Pittsburgh Planning Department IZ slide titled, "Where Has This Worked Already?" Councilmembers, what are we talking about here? Why are we trying to personally experience the mistakes of others? Aside from "don't do it," there's another lesson we can learn from these cities, and that's show your work. Minneapolis and Portland set up reporting requirements upfront to see if what they were doing was working. It wasn't. Baltimore learned the hard way. It took them fifteen years, and when they finally did it, their overhaul added reporting requirements. Pittsburgh City Controller just released a report on the city's existing IZ neighborhoods, recommending that the Planning Department provide real-time reporting on housing construction so that we can see what's going on. The IZ legislation that's already on the books lacks transparency and has no clear metrics to determine success. The same is true of today's proposal. I'm concerned that what the sponsors of this provision on Council learn from the successes in other cities is that if there's no data, it's much harder to prove that you've made a huge mistake. Don't legislate on vibes, we've had enough of that in 2025. It's a mistake that Pittsburgh renters will pay for. Strip the IZ, pass the rest, go Pittsburgh, go Pens. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Lucas Godchalk, Leaf Hancock's, and Benjamin Lyons.
Good afternoon, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I do. My name's Lucas Godchalk, I'm a resident of Highland Park. I'm here today to ask the city to vote down the city-wide expansion of inclusionary zoning. My wife and I have recently purchased our home here in Pittsburgh, and we've decided to raise our family here. Speaking as a parent of young children, I myself know the immense value of being able to be close to family. But staying close to family is predicated on the ability to afford to live there, and in this day and age, nothing affects that more than housing costs. If Pittsburgh is to remain affordable, an affordable, equitable place, it is essential that we create policies that have a proven track record of improving housing affordability for everyone, not just a lucky few. Inclusionary zoning, unfortunately, has never been shown to do this. While I trust that supporters of inclusionary zoning have good intentions, we must ultimately judge housing policy not on intent, but on its actual outcomes. Study after study, report after report, from here in Pittsburgh and across the United States, has repeatedly shown that inclusionary zoning provides a pitiful number of affordable housing units to a few lucky families, and in exchange, destroys large amounts of housing production and drives up rents across the board. The reason for this is straightforward. We have wonderful affordable housing projects being built across our city right now. They are made possible by grants and loans from public and private sources to help close the funding gap left by renting units below the cost of construction. IZ legislates that every housing project be affordable, but does not guarantee the necessary funding that always goes with it. This virtually guarantees that many projects will not get built, leaving a housing shortage unaddressed, and plenty of current Pittsburghers unable to move to a better place. Thank you.
Everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Awesome. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ben Lyons. I am a Boomerang resident, currently living in Greenfield after having spent some years out in Colorado. I'm speaking to urge City Council to vote down IZ. The reasons that I have opposed to inclusionary zoning are very simple. Mandatory inclusionary zoning will increase housing project costs, which will drive home builders out of the city and into exurbs like Cranbury and Washington. With supply low and demand rising, housing prices will skyrocket in simple economics. This is the last thing that we need with our population finally beginning to inch up after half a century of decline. As others have said previously, the impact of similar anti-growth measures is visible all around the country. I left Colorado, I left Fort Collins, in part because demand has been high for decades while supply has been constrained. The result is an unlivable city. Young families and working people out there can barely afford to live within the city limits. Enrollment is so low that even though the city's population is growing, it still came within inches of closing multiple elementary schools last year. We should not, and we cannot afford to repeat those mistakes here. Looking at the bigger picture, IZ will hit the brakes on development at a time we should be building as much housing as possible, not only to meet current and near-term demand, but also in anticipation of future changes in migration. Pittsburgh's population is growing not only because it is so affordable compared to other metros, but also because climate change has begun making entire regions of the country effectively uninsurable. We are not one of them. If you think our housing crisis is bad in 2025, think about how much worse it may get thirty years from now if we don't build accordingly now. Pittsburgh is my home, and I am deeply invested in its future. And that future, to me, should be a growing city full of abundant, affordable housing. We have the chance to make that possible. We should take it while we can. Thank you.
I want to go back to Leaf Hancock's.
Hello. Sorry, I'm trying to find my script. Hello. My name is Leaf Hancock's Lee. I'm a resident of Lawrenceville. I'm speaking to oppose not fully funded inclusionary zoning, and my opposition is based on academic research that shows that inclusionary zoning that isn't fully funded makes market-rate units scarcer and more unaffordable. units scarcer and more unaffordable. If inclusionary zoning is not fully funded, it reduces construction of new housing in a period where we badly need more new housing. My assertions are not just based on economic theory, but on multiple lines of empirical evidence, which some speakers have pointed to. Empirical studies have found that inclusionary zoning that isn't fully funded decreases construction, raises home prices, and raises rents. The city of Portland found that the initially unfunded inclusionary zoning mandate led to a branching of new construction at sizes just below the size that triggers IZ requirements, showing that developers would use the size of new construction to avoid the IZ penalty. A recent study has found the same in Pittsburgh neighborhoods that currently have unfunded inclusionary zoning, and economic modeling has backed up these same conclusions about supply crisis and rents. In Pittsburgh, we need to increase housing density for transportation and climate change reasons. We also need to slow the rise of rents on the open market, which serves the vast majority of Pittsburgh renters. Inclusionary zoning that's not fully funded works against both of these goals. I fully support the other components of this proposal, the removal of parking fines and legalizing ADUs, but I oppose the inclusionary zoning component unless it is fully funded per se. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Jonathan Aldrich, Samantha Hancock Lee, and Emma Gamble.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Aldrich. I'm a computer science professor at Carnegie Mellon University. I live in Squirrel Hill in Warwick's district. While I'm not an economist, one of my areas of specialization is software engineering, where economic principles and economic analysis techniques are important. I have a personal stake in the cost of housing in Pittsburgh. My two children are within a few short years of needing to find a place they can afford to live on their own. They've even looked at units. In addition, nearly all of my graduate students at Carnegie Mellon rent. When I arrived here in 2003, housing was cheap in Pittsburgh. Unfortunately, that is no longer the case. I know what it means to be scraping and to need affordable housing. While I have a good paying job now, I grew up as a child of a single mom who was a parochial school teacher. That means she earned even less than a public school teacher. We spent a year living in a 300-square-foot trailer, my mom, me, the dog, the mice, and the cockroaches. It was small and not especially nice, but we were glad to have a home, and living there helped my mom save for a down payment on an inexpensive condo. So I've been reading the literature on the economics of housing. What that literature says overwhelmingly is that inclusionary zoning bills mandates, like the ones City Council is considering today, raise the cost of housing. Inclusionary zoning mandates are well-intentioned. The goal is to create housing reserved for the poorest among us without having to spend city funds on it. But the problem is, it just doesn't work. The affordable units don't produce enough income to pay for their construction. Therefore, the other units in the building have to be rented at a higher rate. Sometimes that means it's not worth it to build, and so we don't get the housing we need built here. Sometimes the building does get built, but its renters pay a higher cost, and that spills over into the larger renter market. Economically, as others have said, inclusionary zoning operates as a tax, and the renters in our city pay it. Since renters are almost always lower income than homeowners, we are essentially taxing lower-income people to solve our housing crisis, and this makes the problem worse for most renters. There is a better way. Unfunded inclusionary zoning makes housing harder to build in Pittsburgh. We should make it easier to build housing. Getting rid of parking minimums, making it easier to build accessory dwelling units, allowing larger lot sizes, these are all good things. We should allow denser buildings citywide, too. Instead of inclusionary zoning mandates, provide affordable housing in other ways. Building funded affordable housing units is great. We should do that. Housing choice features are great. We should administer them more efficiently so that they work better. And we should raise funds for both of these through general revenue. Raise my property taxes as a homeowner. Don't raise housing costs for renters who are poorer than me. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Samantha Hancock Lee. I live in Lawrenceville, and I'm here to oppose inclusionary zoning. Lawrenceville was the first neighborhood in the city where the inclusionary zoning project was tried. Right, this was the pilot neighborhood for the project. That was six years ago, in 2019. And, I mean, has it worked? Right, take a walk around Lawrenceville. Has gentrification stopped in Lawrenceville? Is Lawrenceville less racially segregated than it was six years ago? Is Lawrenceville more affordable than it was six years ago? Like, I mean, I asked that like a question, but it's not. I mean, just take a walk around. It's bullshit. You know, pardon my language. Lawrenceville is more expensive than ever. I mean, to be frank, it's quieter than ever. We can see that this program has had six years to deliver results for Lawrenceville, and it hasn't. Right, what has it done? Prices keep going up and up and up. Construction has slowed down ever since we implemented IZ here. It's not working. It's just visibly, tangibly not working to deliver an affordable city for people. Right? And, you know, you can get into whatever kind of academic literature you want to, but just, I mean, like I said, just take a look around at the places where we've tried it in this city and ask yourself, "Hasn't worked." That's all. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Emma Gamble, and I'm the Community Engagement and Program Manager at Lawrenceville United. And I am here to speak today in support of the entirety of the Housing Needs Assessment zoning package. IZ is a modest policy that isn't going to solve our affordable housing crisis, but it does do some things well, and we shouldn't be so quick to discount them. National research has shown that the majority of places in the U.S. that have IZ have produced as many or more affordable units through IZ as through the low-income housing tax credit program, which is the most important resource for creating affordable housing in America today. IZ has been shown to help reduce displacement of low-income neighbors from their communities. Cities with IZ have been shown to have better health outcomes. And uniquely among affordable housing programs, IZ is effective at expanding access to low-poverty neighborhoods and better-performing schools, which is critically important when we know that our kids' futures are more determined by their zip codes than even the characteristics of their parents. The concern that IZ could unintentionally inhibit much-needed housing is one that this proposed policy carefully accounts for. The city already offers a significant buyright tax abatement to all qualifying projects to pay for the mandate. It provides a measure to recoup most or all of the lost rent by accepting vouchers. It offers flexibility to developers to build units off-site or to provide fewer units in exchange for providing more family-sized housing. And it provides significant density bonuses, 30 feet of extra height, plus two FAR points, and the waiver of residential compatibility standards. These density provisions would have made a number of new housing projects happen that recently died in zoning hell. If you want to cut red tape to build more housing that's denser and more climate-friendly, then you should love this bill. A lot of speakers cited the Pro Housing Pittsburgh report in their comments today, but I think it's been thoroughly discredited. And I would just refer folks to Controller Heisler's report. It showed a big increase in units entitled in Lawrenceville since IZ went into effect, and a tiny 1.8% decrease in units completed in Lawrenceville over the study area, which probably has a lot more to do with other factors, given that the South Side flats saw a much larger decrease in housing units during that same time period and didn't have IZ. This is consistent with the national research on the subject. Just a couple months ago, an empirical study looked at the national database of IZ policies across the entire U.S. and found that, quote, "On average, IZ policies do not affect municipality-wide housing permits or rents," unquote. Some of the comments that I've heard today over these months seem to sneer at IZ as good intentions gone wrong, but I think building housing opportunities that welcome new neighbors of every income range to our communities is something that Pittsburghers should be proud of. We should be smart about achieving these results, and we can do something. Please pass this package. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Joanna Demming, Laura Chu-Wynes, and then Tom Frank.
Good afternoon. My name is Jo Demming. I'm a resident of Perry South and I'm formerly the Executive Director of Perry Hilltop and Fineview Citizens Council. I am here today to urge you to adopt inclusionary zoning in the full zoning package. And frankly, I'm pretty upset after listening to everyone. I keep asking myself, why do so many of the loudest voices against inclusionary zoning come from newer residents? If you just moved here and you could afford to buy in, why is this policy so concerning? Why are you here? For long-term residents, this isn't abstract. So staying in neighborhoods they built and lived in forever. What feels threatening about ensuring Pittsburgh stays affordable and diverse? Most of these sound like for-profit talking points of developers. Now, whilst inclusionary zoning isn't a silver bullet, it is a proven low-cost tool that gets the market, helping to build more affordable units. It's also one of the only things that promotes economic integration, and it's been shown to help low-income people access high-opportunity neighborhoods and deconcentrate poverty, increasing opportunity to drop schools and services. And while inclusionary zoning clearly isn't going to solve the problem, it's better to have more tools in the toolbox. It needs to be part of a bigger strategy around public investment, preserving what we have, protecting tenants. And while I should be thrilled that we're here today and this could happen, I'm so tired of waiting for it to happen. It was 15 years ago, you know, when the Inclusionary Zoning Working Group for the Housing Alliance started a white paper that showed what would be most effective. This helped inform the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations. Why has it taken so long? I admire our city leaders. I believe that most of you care about keeping Pittsburgh affordable and diverse. And while we waited, too many low-income people, too many Black residents have been pushed out. We've become one of the whitest, least affordable cities in the country, and we've sent many public dollars to private developers, increasing market rate projects, and affordability has shrunken. So if what others said is true, and we just increase development, we're going to get more affordability? That has not happened. So please don't let new residents guide the future of Pittsburgh. Please prioritize the voices of those who've called the city home for decades and trust yourselves. Today you have the opportunity to enact inclusionary zoning. Vote your values, be on the right side of history. Let's build a more just and equitable Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Laura Chu-Wynes, and I'm the Executive Director of Pittsburghers Republic Transit and a Pittsburgh city resident in the Park Place neighborhood at 7731 Edgerton Avenue. PPT is a grassroots union of transit riders and workers organizing for accessible, expandable, affordable public transit for all with no communities left behind. I've now been in this role at PPT for eight years, and just this time, many of our members, Black families, older adults, disabled people, students, my friends, have been priced out of their homes and unable to find housing in the city of Pittsburgh. Some have become homeless, others stranded in communities far in the outskirts of the county with limited or no access to public transit. This is a familiar story. I'm retelling it because nothing has changed for our community over these years. If anything, access to public transit and the basic ability for families to get to schools and jobs and food and medical appointments has become even more scarce, making places where transit remains robust even more valuable. We need policies, more than ever, that allow transit riders to be able to afford to live in the city of Pittsburgh by busways, the T, the university line, within our frequent service corridors in Carson and Butler Streets and Forbes, in Brighton Road and North Avenue. Right? Inclusionary zoning does that because these transit corridors are also where development is happening. IZ is a policy solution that both creates some affordable housing and integrates city neighborhoods that are hubs of opportunity and resources in transit. That is a fact. So I wasn't intending on rehashing the research or the data because that's all been made abundantly clear, and I don't even want to, I didn't want to mention the Pro Housing report because it was so thoroughly discredited. What is instead being decided today is this question: Which constituency drives decision-making at City Council, and who in Pittsburgh will be prioritized? Councilwoman's members Gross, Lavelle, Warwick, and Mosley have made their choice to stand with people over bad-faith developers. And I say bad faith because there are good developers, even reasonable developers, who have opted into participating in IZ in the city of Pittsburgh, not only because it serves the community, but presumably because it doesn't tank their bottom line, notably Giant Eagle Shakespeare, Connection in the South Side, the TWG project in Laramore, the Hewlett project in the Strip. On the other side, there are bad-faith developers like Walnut Capital who refuse to discuss, refuse to negotiate, and who cry wolf even though that they themselves are the wolves. And so, and so today and for the IZ vote, all eyes are on City Council. Who will you choose to stand with, and what will you choose to stand for? Thank you.
I'm assuming you all can hear me. Hello, my name is Tom Frank. I represent NAOP Pittsburgh, which serves approximately 500 people working in the commercial real estate industry. I think it's important to make one thing clear. A lot of things that I was going to say have already been said. This is a public housing policy, not an affordable housing policy. This is vastly different in terms of development. You are asking people to do something in terms of funding sources that they've never done. You're asking them to go way beyond what multiple cities have as requirements. And studies show that whenever you have a deeply affordable policy such as this one, with a massive lack of incentives such as this one, all you do is reduce stock and increase rent. And who does that rent hurt? It hurts your average renter. This is a pretty bad regressive tax policy. And I would even take it a step further to say that, you know, this election is pretty much a referendum on this policy. You should let the incoming administration decide what is going to happen. I'm going to pretty much leave it there because everything else I was going to say has already been said, but I strongly oppose this policy on behalf of our organization. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Justin Hunt, Angel Gober, and Andrew Barber.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Hunt. I'm a resident of Shadyside, and I'm speaking against the proposed citywide inclusionary zoning expansion. I'm a director at the Umherst Group, a real estate development firm based in the city of Pittsburgh and entirely invested in the region. Our largest investor in the city are the men and women of the trades unions and their families, and we have created hundreds of jobs in the region during our 52-year history. I've worked on housing properties in Pittsburgh, Greater Philadelphia, New York, North Carolina, Indiana, and Florida over my 10-year career. In 2023 and 2024, Pittsburgh experienced some of the highest rent growth across the United States while unsurprisingly experiencing some of the lowest supply. This is why people and renters are rightly upset. Making housing development more challenging through expanding inclusionary zoning across the city, as economists have proven time and time again, will continue to push rents higher and higher and hurt Pittsburghers who rent their home and look to achieve upward mobility. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Angel online or in person, so the next speaker? Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Lissane Latimore, resident of the Hill District. Now, I'm reading this statement on behalf of Angel Gober, and she lives at 1128 Woodland Avenue on the north side of Pittsburgh. And she's here representing 412 Justice and all the people of Pittsburgh who cannot afford quality housing in our city. Now, for years, we've been fighting, begging, and advocating for a permanent inclusionary housing policy, and for years, we've been ignored. Now, we won't elect officials in our region to do the right thing for their residents. We want them to work for us, and we want you to stop rolling out the red carpet for developers and, you know, give the residents in your constituency a little of that red carpet. Now, with all the devastation happening in the world, attacks on working people, Black people, immigrants, seniors, and everyday folks just trying to survive, and why would you not put in protections and guardrails that guarantee at least some people, of course not all, because that would be too much of doing the right thing, to have a place to live in this city? And are you blind to the fact that real estate costs are really through the roof? We've all seen it. Now, when was the last time any of you tried to find an apartment in the city that's clean, safe, and under $2,500 a month? safe, and under $2,500 a month? I challenge all of you to go through the process, find housing, and report back to us. See what you get. Now, letting developers dictate what happens in this city is unacceptable. And you are not elected to represent developers. Of course, business, you have to do that. But you were elected to represent us, your constituents, your districts. Now, developers, well, it's not really a housing issue. It's really an equity and inclusion issue. Now, developers running around saying, "Oh, this will stop development," is a complete crock of shit. Quote. Walnut Capital has made plenty of cash, relieve me, they've rolled it in the dough. Now, there are hundreds of cities that have already passed exclusionary zoning, and development is doing fine. And it's time to step up and do the right thing. So I ask you, as you're going to continue to let fear and money dictate your decisions, or are you finally going to actually help the people in this town? This is the steel city. It's time to show some steel. Stop acting soft and stand up to these bully developers. Now...
Thank you.
You're not really beholden to them, although every business is important in our city. Have I run out of time?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. Well, thank you, and I'd rather you see, do the, do something for the greater good than the greater policy.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Dr. Andrew Barber. I'm a resident of Lawrenceville and a PhD economist specializing in housing and labor markets. My training is in evaluating how policies shape incentives and outcomes, and I want to begin by saying I share the same goal I've heard so many people speak to: An affordable, inclusive Pittsburgh. But I come to this with a particular perspective. Before moving here, I lived in the Bay Area, where decades of well-intentioned but poorly-designed housing policy has ravaged the ecosystem. Mandatory inclusionary zoning was one of those tools. After nearly three decades, it produced about only 6,800 affordable units against a regional need of more than 133,000, leaving families stuck on decade-long wait lists and costs spiraling out of reach. Homeownership has become impossible for young people. Rents soar to unimaginable levels. That's what happens when you try to create affordability by mechanically shrinking the supply. We're already seeing similar dynamics here. In Lawrenceville, since mandatory IZ was adopted in 2019, housing production in 20-plus-unit buildings fell 30%. Meanwhile, comparable neighborhoods without IZ, like the Strip District and the South Side Flats, saw growth of 36% and 18% respectively. Careful analysis estimates Lawrenceville lost, potentially lost hundreds of homes that otherwise would have been built. And because every 100 new market-rate units opens up 17 to 40 lower-rent units through filtering, this isn't just a loss of market supply, it's a net loss of affordability. As an economist, I can tell you the mechanism is straightforward. Forcing below-cost units into a project is effectively a tax on new construction. When supply is elastic, meaning responsive, the supply is responsive to price, taxes mean fewer projects get financed, and affordability worsens across the board. But the good news is, we know what works. We can look at Austin, Texas. They can't mandate IZ under state law, so instead they built strong voluntary density bonus programs, offering real height, density, reduced parking, and faster approvals in exchange for affordability. They recalibrate regularly to keep projects viable. The result? Austin leads the nation in new apartment construction and delivered over 4,600 affordable units in 2024, with another 3,500 projected this year. They grew supply and affordability at the same time. It can be done. That's the path Pittsburgh should follow: Embrace reforms that add homes rather than subtract them, expand accessory-driven units, eliminate parking minimums, and if we pursue inclusionary zoning, make it voluntary, flexible, and paired with meaningful upzoning and public subsidies for deeper affordability. We all want an inclusive city. The choice is whether we pursue that goal with policies that shrink the pipeline or with policies to grow it. From the Bay Area to my home in Lawrenceville, we've seen what happens when we choose the first. From Austin, we can see what's possible with the second. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Neil Desai, Jason Pampina, and Michael Tedesco.
My name is Neil Desai, and I'm asking that City Council vote down the proposal to expand inclusionary zoning citywide. I'm a resident of Councilmember Strasburger's district, and I'm both a Pittsburgh renter and part of a generation for whom homeownership feels increasingly out of reach. I care deeply about the city's rising rents and housing costs, and I want to see policies that truly address the affordability crisis. The root cause of high housing costs is a shortage of supply in the areas people want to live. Unfortunately, IZ makes that problem worse. By raising the costs and barriers to building, IZ reduces housing supply, which in turn drives rents even higher. We already have an IZ program in Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, Polish Hill, Oakland, and yet the city has not gathered proper data to evaluate whether it even worked, something that even the City Controller's Office has pointed out in their report. Expanding IZ citywide without any evidence of success would just be reckless. And Pittsburgh's IZ proposal is especially bad and especially harmful, because it's mandatory, underfunded, and citywide. Cities like Portland and Baltimore have tried unfunded IZ, and they had to roll it back or completely overhaul it when they saw that it killed new housing construction. Extending IZ to every neighborhood in Pittsburgh will completely choke off development in areas that are already struggling to attract investment. IZ also shifts the cost of those few subsidized units onto the majority of renters, raising our rents, while homeowners and landlords share none of the burden. That's not fair renters like me, and it makes the housing crisis worse. Claiming that developers are just going to be the ones paying the cost of IZ is, just like Trump claiming that China pays the tariffs. In that case, the costs get passed on to American consumers, and in this case, the cost gets passed on to Pittsburgh renters, while existing landlords just go laughing at the bank as they increase our rents even more. Studies in other cities have shown that IZ backfires, leading to less housing and higher prices. I have no special love for developers, but I know that if the numbers don't work, they will simply not build here. And Pittsburgh can't afford to lose desperately needed new housing to Butler County or to Cleveland. Okay? I really don't want to lose to Butler. But there are better solutions. I strongly support simplifying zoning, eliminating parking minimums, and legalizing ADUs, all of which are proven to increase housing supply and affordability. But these should be passed as standalone policies, not tied to IZ. You did the right thing with minimum lot sizes, and I hope you'll do the same with parking minimums. So for these reasons, I urge you to vote no on expanding IZ citywide, and suggest let's focus on solutions that truly address the supply shortage and will actually make Pittsburgh more affordable for everyone. Thank you.
My name is Jason Pampina, and I'm a city resident in District 8 in Councilmember Strasburger's district. And I'm here to express my strong support for the Inclusionary Zoning Bill that's being put forward here today. So I've, I've heard a lot of apocalyptic sounding predictions and possibilities coming from some of the folks opposed to this legislation. And, and just wanted to share kind of more of a story a little bit, just kind of to express my experience with this, to hopefully provide a little bit of a context. So I've lived in and around Pittsburgh my whole life, moved to Square Hill in 2008. I'm a retired professional firefighter, and I bought my house on my, on my kind of middle-income government salary. Incidentally, that's something that I certainly couldn't do today. But so that's, you know, I'm fortunate to, to be in a place where I have a stable housing situation. You know, my, my family and I live in Square Hill and own our house, and, and we're very fortunate that way. As a firefighter, however, I've seen that there's a lot of folks that that's not the case. You know, been inside a lot of people's houses, and there's, there's a lot of people living in, living conditions that are really not as they should be, you know, not what we would expect for safe and dignified living conditions. And, and I think the situation is kind of just continuing to get worse and worse. In the time since I was a firefighter, one of the things that I do these days is I substitute each part-time at Pittsburgh Public Schools, in elementary school at Concord Elementary and Carrick. And, and it's honestly, it's, I, it's difficult to say it a little bit. It's heartbreaking to see the conditions that some of our kids' living experiences are. You know, just from, from moving around from place to place and kind of stuff like that, to the extent that there's even occasionally kids that are, that are unhoused and coming to school. And it's, this, it's, you know, as, as somebody who's been a lifelong Pittsburgher and is deeply proud of this city, that that's, that's just not the state of affairs that we should have here in the city of Pittsburgh. And so all of this said, you know, I've, I've heard some, what I thought were some pretty insightful comments earlier on. Inclusionary zoning is not going to be a magic bullet to, to fix this entire problem, but it's unconscionable that we would fail to, to kind of start to put some tools in our toolbox and take steps to, to move toward getting a city that has safe and appropriate housing for every single person that's in it. Thank you for your time and attention.
If not, we'll move to Jonah Dubin, Jennifer Haven, and Mark Cosman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Jonah Dubin. I'm a CMU grad, former employee of Habitat for Humanity, and currently I'm fixing up my once-dilapidated home in the South Side Flats, Bubbs Charles District. I'm speaking because I hope that City Council will vote down IZ. When I worked at Habitat, most of our work was in Laramo, where huge parts of the neighborhood have been left abandoned. I remember a particular moment that was extremely frustrating. We had been working on three new homes on a plot that had been vacant for decades, and we had found families that were going to be able to live there, families who had already spent months working alongside us. The buildings were done, we knew exactly what every single day looked like for those families until they moved in. The city told us that because a previous version of our building permit had included a fence, we couldn't allow the new homeowners to move in until that fence had been completed. The homeowners of all three buildings didn't want the fence, but for the next two weeks, I, my coworkers, volunteers, we all had to build it anyway because of that permit. The permit cost a nonprofit thousands of dollars, and more importantly, it meant that 14 people had to wait to access a home that they deserved, they had worked for, that the community had built alongside them. Construction is hard. If we want units built, we cannot artificially increase costs. Inclusionary zoning doesn't magically create new units that cost less any more than permits build fencing, or, as City Council has already recognized, and I'm grateful, parking. Every single unit that is built, whether by a nonprofit or a company, whether rent capped or not, costs over 100 and quite often hundreds of thousands of dollars. To make their money back, developers need to bring in a certain amount of rent, and if they can't, they just won't build there. If Pittsburgh disallows market rent from being charged on certain units, that means thousands of dollars of lost rental income in comparison to open-zone cities. It means, in short, that Pittsburgh is suddenly a muscleless, financially irresponsible choice to build in than other places like Austin, Texas. It's worth noting, the places that we've seen have the largest drop in rental prices are the places that allow market rent. And the places that have become less affordable are places like California with rent caps. If we want to fix the housing crisis, we need to agree at a base level that people who are building housing are doing something good for the community. Some of them might be doing it for selfish reasons, but it is good for Pittsburgh when a longtime empty plot becomes home to a longtime underserved family. If we want that to happen more, we cannot artificially inflate the cost of the construction, and we cannot artificially cap the amount of money that these projects can pull in. If we want to build more housing, don't tax the building of housing. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Haven. I live in the Friendship neighborhood of Pittsburgh. I am in Deb Gross's District 7, and I have lived here for about 25 years. I am here today to ask you to pass the package of zoning amendments, including inclusionary zoning. I am strongly in favor of all of the amendments, including inclusionary zoning. I feel that inclusionary zoning is a proven approach that aligns the interests of developers, local governments, and residents to build inclusive, resilient, vibrant communities. A lot of the speakers today are acting as though no developer wants this, this inclusionary zoning to happen. However, I know in, in my neighborhood and neighborhoods around here, we've been working with developers a lot to add affordability to their builds, and they're more than happy to do so, because there has been a huge increase in the amounts of government funding and foundation funding to enable them to do that. I sat on the local board when we were discussing the Sure Safe Project. We met for months and months with the developer, and they were more than happy to add that affordability. A lot of people have spoken today stating that the inclusionary zoning mandate was the reason that that project failed. I take a different approach to that, because I was at the zoning hearing, and I, I spoke with, and I sat alongside of the people that were both pushing for those variances and also listened to the people that were living nearby. The reason that the people that were living nearby did not want the height variance was because it would block their houses. It would make their neighborhood feel too tall, feel too big. They were worried about over-parking, because they, they don't have enough parking already in the neighborhood. And I feel that those people that spoke to, in opposition to those variances, really weighed heavily on the zoning board, because they were the near neighbors to the site. So I do not think that the mandatory inclusionary zoning was ultimately the reason that it failed. I think it's telling that the opponents of the inclusionary zoning policy so far can be put into three categories. I've heard from folks that moved here recently from other cities and states, and they try to view our Pittsburgh-based policy through the lens of those other locations. Second, I hear developers or developers' mouthpieces that are repeatedly talking, having talking points that they've been emailed in advance at the hearing. You see the same phrases over and over again. And also, there are a lot of people citing Austin, Texas, as a boon to new development, and they did it without IZ, with the age of housing stock, population growth, underlining zoning code, fire code, occupancy limits, are just in complete difference to what we have in Pittsburgh.
Distinguished members of council, my name is Mark Cosman. I'm the Executive Vice President of Cosman Development Company and former Chairman of the Board at Pittsburgh Habitat for Humanity. Our company owns a number of commercial buildings and vacant parcels of land within the city of Pittsburgh. I'm here today as both a property owner and concerned citizen to speak on the effects of the proposed inclusionary zoning legislation. Via EMI, I have provided the council more in-depth comments, which I hope you will take the time to read in earnest. While the intentions of the proposed legislations are good, the resulting impacts of the proposed legislation will have an opposite effect. Housing costs will continue to rise, and less affordable housing will be available. If enacted, this legislation will be detrimental to the growth, vitality, prosperity of the city and region. This is simply a matter of supply and demand. The proposed legislation imposes a permanent economic burden on apartment developers, which will make most projects unprofitable and unfinancable. If developers cannot finance these projects, then they will not get built. If new apartment projects are not being built in the city, supply will continue to be constrained, while demand for apartments will rise along with rents. Development process is long and complex. It takes a minimum of three to five years to develop an apartment project from start to finish, including economic stabilization. Presently, the city of Pittsburgh has the lowest apartment inventory in any major metropolitan area. At the same time, the city is seeing influx of younger adults with higher incomes. The city is experiencing marginal population growth for the first time in 45 years. Also considered the augmenting prosperity of the office retail market in the city's... I'm sorry, I'm not feeling... Is there any bottled water available? Is there any bottled water available?
Sir, if you would like, you could take a seat, and I'll, when you're ready, I'll, you can come back up.
Good afternoon, my name is Julie Nigro. I'm a resident of the Garfield neighborhood and also the Director of Real Estate for City of Bridges Community Land Trust. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed zoning code amendments related to the housing needs assessment. The City of Pittsburgh is in desperate need of more affordable housing units. The City of Pittsburgh also wants to encourage developers to build more housing of all types. These two things do not have to contradict each other and can work together. The housing needs assessment suggested multiple policies that the city could implement in order to improve the housing needs for the city. The three policies that we are discussing here today are all tools that the city can use to improve the housing needs for all city residents. While these policies won't immediately or completely solve the problem of improving our affordable housing shortage, they offer three tools to help address the problem. Specifically, inclusionary zoning is a longstanding and widely adopted policy across the country that has helped create thousands of affordable housing units nationwide. Research has shown that good inclusionary zoning policies do not constrain housing supply, but often actually improve it. IZ effectively addresses segregation by expanding access to economically diverse neighborhoods and better schools for low-income families. At City of Bridges Community Land Trust, we see firsthand how difficult it is to get affordable housing built. We build for sale, single-family affordable housing, and on average, a new construction home costs us almost $500,000 in total development cost to build. The creation of new construction, single-family homes is currently unsustainable and will not effectively address the affordable housing shortage that the city is facing. Adopting an IZ policy was listed in multiple reports and studies as an effective way to reduce our housing, affordable housing shortage. Allowing ADUs to be built by right on certain parcels is another way we can reduce costs about affordable homes by also creating more sustainable, accessible, and adaptable homes that allow homeowners additional flexibility and a potential income stream. Finally, removing parking minimums is an easy way for the city to promote the creation of new housing and reduce barriers to development. Parking is and always will be a topic of contention, but if we want to get serious about addressing our affordable housing shortage, we need to prioritize the creation of affordable homes, not parking spaces. Like community land trusts, IZ, ADUs, and minimum parking reform are just a few tools that we can use to increase the supply of affordable housing. If we want to be a city that is truly welcoming to all, we need to use all of the tools available to effectively house residents of all income brackets. Therefore, I encourage you to pass the proposed zoning code amendments. Thank you.
All right. Does it need to reset or something? I don't know. My name is Tanisha Long. I'm here to speak in favor of passing the full legislation that is in front of you today, including IZ. One of the things that I have noticed when I've been watching speakers come up, we've had 31 of them before me, is that the people who are speaking against IZ look nothing like me. I mean, Pro Housing Pittsburgh has yet to bring up a black speaker, or a speaker from Homewood, or a speaker from the Hill District, or a speaker from Sheridan. We're seeing these same white men and some women come up and tell us how terrible it would be, and what it would actually do for racial equity, and what black people need. But the people who aren't being heard are the people from the neighborhoods who are going to be most affected, the people who can't, who already cannot afford to live in Pittsburgh. Those are the voices that you are not hearing when people come out against IZ because they're not against it. They just want a place to live in the city that they grew up in. And I'm someone who deeply embraces the idea that Pittsburgh should be a city that's welcoming, a city for immigrants, a city for, where our unhoused people can find housing, a city where someone could move from here and grow a future. But what I don't think should happen is that we ignore the needs of existing residents, residents who have already experienced displacement and been pushed out of our cities. We're talking about Lawrenceville doesn't have any more people anymore, they're all moving out. A lot of people are forgetting that we're studying the last five or six years as if we didn't go through a whole entire pandemic, that those numbers are going to be skewed because things cost more nationwide, that we're using very small sample studies and book reports being passed, passed around as though they're real reports by people who are claiming to be experts. We have people coming here from CMU who have hired people from California to speak on what Pittsburgh needs. Pittsburgh is not comparable to Houston. Pittsburgh is not comparable to Baltimore. Pittsburgh is not comparable to most major cities. We have different needs, we have a different layout, and we have a different population. And we need to quit pretending that the needs of Houston and the needs of Baltimore are reflected in the needs of the City of Pittsburgh. Your residents are right here. The people who are speaking out in favor of IZ are people who have already gone through displacement, are people who already can't afford to live in their neighborhoods, and are people who aren't in bed with developers. I think we've given a disproportionate amount of time and space to developers in this conversation, and I think we have confused the idea of accountability with punishment. We're not punishing developers by being, by asking them to be accountable to the citizens of the City of Pittsburgh who grew up here and who were raised here. I heard a lot of people who are here from the Bay, who are here from Colorado, who are here from different parts of the country because their places were unaffordable. So what makes them believe that they should drive housing policy in Pittsburgh after just moving here? I'm a resident of Pittsburgh, and I'm telling you what you need, and I've been here for over a decade. The people who are on the pro, the, the pro-Housing Pittsburgh, the anti-IZ crowd, are people who are not affected by this situation, who can afford to buy housing. And that's what we need to pay attention to when we're considering this bill and pass it. Thank you.
I live in lower Lawrenceville, and today I'd like to speak in favor of the inclusionary zoning and the complete reform package. I'd like to echo Emma G., Laura from Pittsburghers for Public Transit, and Tanisha's comments especially. I think they've done a great job laying out the case, and I'm very excited for these improvements. Removing parking minimums in particular is fantastic, and increasing housing near transit corridors is an excellent way for growing our city at all levels of employment and work. I think the city's presentation and Lawrenceville United's discussions have covered these positive changes well, and I'd especially like to highlight Tanisha's comments on the impact of COVID these last five years. That's definitely warped everything that's gone on, and we need to keep that in mind. And so overall, I'm in favor of these changes, and in the future, I'd love to continue discussions of increasing upzoning for greater density and speeding up ways to build, making variances less necessary, you know, and standardizing zoning. So again, in favor of these changes. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Jonathan Bennett Glantz, John Rhodes, and GL Johnson.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Glantz. I don't know why we got the formality of my middle name, but anyhow, thank you. I'm a partner at LGA Partners Architects. We employ 90 professionals in downtown Pittsburgh at Gateway Four. We are in opposition of this IZ. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what's been said before. I'm going to try to summarize in two ways. We're in opposition because construction in the City of Pittsburgh is really, really, really hard. And two, capital doesn't care about affordable housing. Capital cares about return on investment. Construction is really hard in Pittsburgh. The cost of, of doing business in the city, of doing projects in the city is much higher than in the suburbs and much higher in our peer cities like Cleveland or Columbus, where we do work. That cost makes it harder and harder for developers to show interest in doing projects in the city. We have clients who show interest in Pittsburgh, begin to understand about the complexities, and choose to go to other places. And that gets to my second point, which is capital doesn't care. Capital follows the best possible return on investment. That is not a value statement, that is not a political position, it is just true. If it gets to be too hard, or too complex, or too expensive to build in our city, developers will go elsewhere. The developers that are here building in the city do so because they deeply care about the city, but they, but the capital comes from many different sources and uses, and that's not necessarily coming from city residents or pro-Pittsburghers. That's national, or in some cases, international investment. That's how it works. If we want to improve and increase affordable housing in our city, we have to build more supply. Many studies show we're dead last, or nearly dead last, in building new housing, period, affordable or otherwise, of 50 of the largest metro regions in Pittsburgh. That will only get worse if there are more restrictions. I guess one other point is IZ by itself isn't a problem and could be beneficial, but not in its current state, as proposed. What you need if you're going to have, you need to have more incentive if you're going to be able to attract development, to build with this, with IZ. You need more carrot and less stick. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Rhodes, and I live in Polish Hill. I serve as a Board Member of Affordable Housing Nonprofit City of Bridges Community Land Trust, and I'm a member of the Housing Justice Table. I'm here to speak in favor of Bill 1545. Today's bill is important. A major reason it's important rests in what it will deliver: more housing for many families, while also guaranteeing affordability and support for public transit. But perhaps an even bigger reason that this bill is important is the model that it represents. Right now, many outspoken citizens seem to frame discussions around zoning as an either-or choice, when we need to think in terms of both-and solutions. This bill represents a both-and approach. It represents a marriage of both growth and opportunity. Now, some say that the inclusionary zoning component of this bill will put such a financial constraint on development that it will obstruct the creation of the thousands of additional units that Pittsburgh badly needs. But whether or not IZ works is not answered simply by a universal economic formula. All the research shows it really comes down to careful policymaking that looks holistically at the multitude of factors unique to the jurisdiction. In Pittsburgh, our IZ policy is already succeeding where the zoning code allows density appropriate for a thriving city. The Hudson developments on Melwood sit on the urban center-based district, and multiple projects in Lawrenceville, such as Albion, Arsenal 201, and Dalian, are in the riverfront district. IZ and density work hand in hand. They're complementary. That both-and mindset is thoughtfully crafted into the expanded provisions of this bill. In fact, if this updated language were in place two years ago, the Sure Save in Bloomfield would have been allowed to be redeveloped. All the community support for a new supermarket, better bike pedestrian infrastructure, and mandatory affordable units would have been realized. That both-and mindset is what many other cities harness to make their communities better for everyone. That's why, for example, in San Francisco, YIMBY Action, the parent organization of Pro Housing Pittsburgh, endorsed a both-and type of bill called Proposition D in 2022. That bill paired affordability requirements above the city's IZ standard with access to streamlined permitting processes. YIMBY Action supported IZ when it was paired with the right offsets. I think the bill before you already does that, but I know members of council and other community members have advocated for more. If strengthening responsible funding programs or some other components in the package is what it takes, then I hope wise policymakers, who hold everyone in our city in their heart, will utilize their talents to secure a happy marriage of both growth and opportunity, rather than seeing the choice on this bill as either-or, because that is a false choice. We need to recognize both that over 90% of the housing that exists in our city is market rate, and if every corner of this city will have a place for people of any income, there must be policy interventions to ensure socioeconomic opportunity. Thus, please support this bill. Thank you.
You could promote GL Johnson.
Hi, I think I should be on now.
Yes, you are.
Great. All right, thank you. My name is GL Johnson, and I live in lower Lawrenceville. I'm a renter. Combine that with my neighborhood, and it's obvious we need more affordable housing. I've got a stake in that. And I do recognize, under our current system, market-rate housing has to be a part of the mix of affordable housing. I will say, I don't think that's correct. I don't think that's right. I think we should be building it with public money, owned and operated to a high standard by and for the public, but that can't be done from the council table today, unfortunately. So the next, one of the next best things available we can do is inclusionary zoning. In terms of the direct impact of housing, on housing supply, it's probably one of the less important parts of this bill, but in terms of an indirect impact, it may be one of the most important parts of what is a very good bill. So let me explain. I'm an expert in being a person who lives in a place, and I have many friends and associates who also are people who live in places. The thing about living somewhere is that new construction, if the chair will excuse my language, new construction sites, noise, air quality, traffic, it is a pain. And so it's annoying, but I recognize it's something that's helpful for a better city and future, but my friends and associates I speak with look around, they see themselves being inconvenienced, and they see developers who already have obscene amounts of money making even more money off their inconveniences. Naturally, that's pretty unpopular, and they ask, why don't our council people stop it? They know I know a couple of yens. What I can do is I can point to the IZ units that are part of that construction and say, hey, there will be something here for us. But without IZ, I won't be able to say that, and hundreds of other people tuned into housing policy won't be able to either, providing fertile ground to candidates who are against building any new development, and I won't really be able to mount an effective case against them. So those advocating against IZ may risk far greater burdens on the ability of wealthy capitalists to build housing in our city. One more thing, someone pointed out that there were a lot of people who were new residents of Pittsburgh speaking out against IZ, and I'm also somewhat new to the city myself. I've only lived here a bit over nine years, and I think the answer speaks well to the culture of the City of Pittsburgh and the region. So a lot of the testimony against IZ, you hear terms like, you know, you hear, you hear the constant themes that the city is not submitting enough to the desires of large capitalists, here in the form of developers. What these new arrivals may not be totally aware of is the strong and proud history of the people of this region fighting for their and their neighbors' needs against those large capitalists. I think I'm running out of time, so I'll hold, you know, I'll detail that history in a future public comment maybe, but thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Mark Masterson, Lizzie Anderson, and Christina Formartino.
Mark Masterson, I live in Observatory Hill, Executive Director of the Neighborhood Community Development Fund, and also a member of the Housing Justice Table. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Ten years ago, I was honored to serve on Pittsburgh's Affordable Housing Task Force. Our charge then was clear. We needed to recommend new policies to, to council... We needed to recommend new policies to council and the mayor that would promote mixed-income development and ensure that every Pittsburgh neighborhood had housing options for people at all income levels. Since then, we've seen real progress. The Housing Opportunity Fund has been a success. Preservation efforts have kept affordable units in place, and neighborhood pilots in Lawrenceville and Oakland have proven that inclusionary zoning does work. Just last week, a new project in Lawrenceville broke ground with 34 affordable apartments built alongside market-rate housing. But the truth is, Pittsburgh's housing crisis has only deepened. Rents are rising, families are being pushed out, and federal support for housing is shrinking. For too long, the promise of citywide inclusionary zoning, one of our original four task force recommendations, has been left on the shelf. Mixed-income communities don't happen by chance, they require intentional policy. Inclusionary zoning isn't a cure-all, but it's one of the tools that we need to be using to ensure that growth in Pittsburgh benefits everybody. It produces new affordable units in high-opportunity neighborhoods, close to jobs, transit, and schools. We've waited a decade, the evidence is clear, the public support is overwhelming, and the path before you is open right now. Council should act now without further delay to pass mandatory citywide inclusionary zoning. Pittsburgh families cannot afford another 10 years of waiting. Thank you.
Lizzie Anderson here from Polish Hill. I'm here to ask you to pass this package, including passing IZ citywide. IZ is not enough, we know that, but it's a great and necessary step that we need to take as a city to repair for some of the decades of devastation of the displacement on mostly Black and Brown and poor and working-class residents of the city, and in order to move forward together. This is not a difficult decision. It's a simple decision that says that we value people having more access to housing where they want to live over corporations' greed and their amassing of wealth that they hoard and do not redistribute into our neighborhoods. They profit from us, our taxes and outdated zoning policy, but most importantly, they benefit from how we have made Pittsburgh both livable and beautiful, the ways that Black and Brown and poor and working-class people especially have literally built this city and then beautified it with art and ideas and community care, what actually draws people here. But only the most well-off receive any small amount of benefit from these corporations as long as they continue to make unaffordable housing. The free market is not going to save us. Corporations are not going to save us. Capital is not going to save us, and unfettered development is not going to save us. If they could, it would have already happened, because that's what we have already. We have to do something different. We don't need more million or half-a-million-dollar townhouses or high-end apartments that doesn't help us when no one can even afford the housing, the new owners are vacating, or they're being filled by money people from out of town. So please do the most right and simple thing in this moment and vote yes. And then, where can we go from here? How will we then build towards housing as a human right with safe, accessible, and beautiful homes for all? However we get there, it builds from places and moments like this.
Hi. Christina Formartino of Shady Side. I believe in a Pittsburgh that everyone can afford to call home. Housing is a human right, and that should be the spirit of this city, a city that once gave the world Mr. Rogers and his vision of a kind and inclusive neighborhood. But let's be real, we're not living up to that legacy. Developers, corporate landlords, real estate firms who receive public subsidies, benefit from infrastructure, and receive millions in tax breaks are fighting this bill and any other efforts toward affordable housing, because it requires them to give back just 10% of their units, which is not enough, by the way. Yet, that's too much for the likes of Walnut Capital, who has a reported annual revenue of almost $30 million. They took public money to build luxury housing in East Liberty, displacing our Black neighbors, then opposed affordability mandates, all while claiming affordability hurts the market. No, it just hurts their margins. These are not mom-and-pop landlords. They're corporations profiting from a housing crisis that they helped to create. They hike rents, exploit tax loopholes, and displace our neighbors, and then say affordable housing is bad for business. Well, business should not come at the cost of humanity. Did you know that the top 10%, the wealthiest in this country, now owns 70% of all U.S. wealth? Also, this is not an untested policy. Over 700 places nationwide have successfully implemented inclusionary zoning with no evidence of halting housing production. The mayor isn't shifting costs towards renters or slowing development, greedy corporations are. I agree with the previous speaker that this won't be the magic bullet, nor will it be enough, but it's a great start. We have a shortage of more than 8,000 affordable homes, and nearly 40% of Pittsburgh renters are cost-burdened, meaning they spend more than 30% of their income just to stay housed. Council, you have already codified exclusion and greed, and I've seen your financial disclosures and know they're in your pockets. Mr. Rogers would be ashamed, and I'm certain he is not proud of the neighborhood that we have become. As a 15-year veteran of the housing field and the nonprofit landscape, the saddest part of this is that this is a solvable problem here. Being a neighbor means building a place where everyone belongs, not just those who can afford the astronomical rent or who benefit from developer loopholes. We need a defense against the extractive profiteering that has warped this city for decades. Council, you have a choice, and your efforts cannot stop here. You either stand with your neighbors or side with greed. And let's be very clear, developers are fighting inclusionary zoning or doing it because it cuts into their margins, not their ability to build, but their ability to hoard profit. Again, acknowledging this isn't the magic bullet, I urge you to pass this package, act now, and then do much more than this, and please know that myself and the other housing advocates in the room will hold you to it. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Erin Wise, Kent Bay, and Chief Pohmai.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Wise. I live in Highland Park, and I'm speaking today in support of the legislative package before you, including inclusionary zoning. I am a renter, a single mom, someone who lives in a multi-generational household, who provides for her aging and disabled parent. And based on some of the previous comments, I am seemingly in a couple of the groups that those against inclusionary zoning claim to be advocating for in their opposition. And I can't say as though I feel like I need their protections, particularly at the expense of my neighbors who still need affordable housing. I was able to move to the city of Pittsburgh five years ago, and I often tell people that it was the best decision of my life, the first domino in a long line of people and opportunities that have come my way because I call Pittsburgh home. And I have to tell you, I want that for the most amount of people possible. If someone wants to come to this city and call it their home and be our neighbor and build community as I have, I want them to be able to do that and thrive without pushing out generational Pittsburghers. So for that reason alone, I am asking city council to follow the positive recommendation from the Planning Commission and finally pass inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Honorable members of council, and those champions of justice for housing. My name is Kent Bay. I am Hill District resident, three generations in the Hill District, a military veteran, three generations in the military. Men in my family have served this great nation. Since a child, I've always seen many of the concerns addressed in legislation that has been proposed before council now. But my main concern is inclusionary issues in this bill, it sounds great. It's wonderful. I'm all for inclusion. I'm all for affordability, but the thing that we always get caught up in is the oversight. We're quick to approve a bill and approve legislation, but we never give time or attention to oversight, who's going to handle the oversight, to address the concerns of people who have affordability concerns, people who have, such as homeowners, or individuals that would like to become homeowners. I have not heard anything in reference to oversight. It's legislation like this that opens the door for people to take advantage of our emotions in a time of need, where we want to be included, where we want affordable housing, but for some strange reason, we always end up getting caught up in a lot of cronyism. And let's be honest, there's a lot of corruption in the city of Pittsburgh as it relates to affordable housing. You pointed out certain people, certain developers, people that are concerned with having a stake in property, ownership of property, and control of property, but nobody's giving any attention to the oversight process. Who is sitting at the table to address the concerns of individuals such as myself, low-income, marginalized individual, giving concern to people that are dealing with low-income, affordable housing issues, unemployment, need jobs? How does this affect all of our concerns as it relates to this bill? We can rush this bill through, but if we rush this bill through without having a system of checks and balances, what will be our fate at the end of this process?
Thank you. I do not believe I see Chief Pohmai online. So then our next speakers are Robin Horston Spencer, Mel Packer, Erica Payne. Do not see Robin. Is Mel Packer?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Mel Packer. I live in Point Breeze. I want to speak to you from personal experience as one who spent about half of my life as quite a low-income homeowner, then renter, et cetera, et cetera. Again, I came here in 1965 when I was 20 years old. Yeah, I'm old, because CMU had the bad judges to admit me and give me a scholarship to the acting program, which I discovered I hated. So I quit it in my second year, spent the next 15 years driving a truck hauling steel until the mills collapsed. But I was able to buy a house in 1972 in Hazelwood for $10,000, affordable, it was working class. I parked my rig on Hazelwood Avenue. I was low-income, but I could still do that in those days. There was room for me as a low-income worker. But then the mills collapsed, the future struck, and I got recycled into healthcare. I still had to go to Baltimore to find work. Sadly, and I, my wife, sold the house, we still sold it at affordable price for $38,000 in 1988. Went to Baltimore for 10 years, came home to raise our kids. It was still affordable in 1997. Bought a big house in Point Breeze for $91,000. Crazy as it seems, it was a solid working-class neighborhood. Folks worked, walked to work at Rockwell. You didn't have to have a lot of money to buy a house in Hazelwood. 1997, $91,000. My home today would sell for $800,000. Tell me that isn't ridiculous. Have wages gone up nine times? No, but my value of my home went up nine times. That's just absurd. It was all around me, we'd see a big condos, crappy boxy apartments, walnut crap, it was from a small-unit player to a big player in this town, they get tight and beduette, developers moved in. Guess who gets forced out? Everybody we've been talking about, low-income folks who keep the city running, and they're disproportionately people of color, we know that. We live in weird times, you know? We somehow think the folks with the money are the ones that keep our world going. It's a myth. They're not even capable of functioning without those who do the daily grind at very low wages. They empty the wastebaskets, serve our lunches, keep the hospital supplies carts full, fix the printers in Google offices, stock the shelves in supermarkets, make the coffee we hate too much for every morning. They're the lifeblood of our city, their arteries, their veins, they're the heart of our city, and that's who's important to us. They pave the roads, they babysit our kids, they run daycare centers, they deliver our mail, they keep us going, and we're forcing them out of the city. Tell them to go to Braddock, the city the veteran claims he rebuilt and nothing ever happened there, or Duquesne without transistor food stores, or Al equipum, my wife's original home, Al equipum, broken down. I admit it, IZ is not going to solve the problem. Many of us admitted that, but it's a lifesaver. It's only going to be solved if we take the profits out of some of the housing market and develop social housing, as they've done so successfully in Toronto, Vienna, the UK, et cetera. Nonetheless, it's a lifeline and a life preserver and a way to acknowledge the worth of those who keep us going, who have the right to live in their communities, who are now being ravaged by predatory developers, who frankly have the morals of a junkyard dog. Pass the bill, do the right thing, it's that simple. Thank you.
Renee Hilton, Russell, it's backwards, Silas Russell, and Nancy Gippert. So no Erica, no Renee. Oh, sorry. I see you. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm Nancy. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is...
Nancy Gippert?
Yeah.
Please, and then...
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nancy Gippert, and I live in Lawrenceville, and this is going to be really brief. I wanted to add my name to support for this legislation. It's been a long time coming, and as everyone has said, this is not going to solve the housing problem, but it's a step in the right direction. Clearly, we are desperately in need of more housing in the city of Pittsburgh, but the people who need the housing most are low- and moderate-income families and individuals in the city. Yes, we need to build more housing, make it easier to build more housing, but when that housing is built under this legislation, some of them would be available for the people who so desperately need it. And living in Lawrenceville, I also want to add that there is a whole lot of construction going on in Lawrenceville. There is no way that, driving down the street is very difficult, because there's building, building, building. So IZ has not stopped building in Pittsburgh. Okay. My point is, I would like, let's see, if you can make a copy of the testimony of Tanisha Long and the people from City of Bridges, that's what I want to say. Thank you very much, and pass this bill.
Good afternoon. Silas Russell, I am a resident of Duquesne Heights, 435 Sweetbrier Street, also the executive vice president of SEIU Healthcare Pennsylvania, with the largest healthcare union in Pennsylvania. We have about 5,000 members who work in the city of Pittsburgh alone, in our hospitals, in our nursing homes, in home care, including about 1,000 UPMC McGee nurses that just organized their union in the last few weeks. And we believe, as I believe that most in our city do, that all people who do work in our city should be able to live in the community where they do that work. You know, of our thousands of members who work here, some make very good income, many make very good income for their profession, but people who provide home care, people who do dietary work in a hospital, even with a union, you know, make $15 or $20 an hour, and in many neighborhoods in Pittsburgh are unable to live and work in those neighborhoods. And I think that we can agree that we want people who care for us, who keep us safe, who keep us healthy, to live and be our neighbors. And, you know, I'm not an expert in housing policy, I'm going to say that. I am an expert actually in healthcare policy, this is what I do, as the policy and research director for our union, and I can tell you, there is no industry that is more regulated than healthcare in our country, and there's a reason for that, because when we have a commodity that we consider to be essential, a human right, and we have a market that fails to address the needs of our people to receive that commodity, that is when regulation is absolutely necessary. And, you know, in healthcare, we've decided that a hospital should accept every single patient, no matter what, regardless of their ability to pay, and we're not going to turn them away. Now, does that drive up the cost of healthcare? In the short term, it does. In the short term, you know, if a person doesn't pay their bill, it does. In the long term, actually, it saves us money, because it keeps people healthy. We... We say that health insurance companies cannot discriminate against people and refuse care for people with pre-existing conditions. These are the same types of standards we're talking about with inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning is not about controlling costs at the top of the market. It is about ensuring that we have safe, new, dignified housing for people who the market will never provide housing for. And a lot of people have gotten to this mic and profess to be experts in economics, but we're having different conversations. We can have a conversation about controlling costs at the top, and we are doing that through this housing policy. And I think everybody's agreed on getting rid of parking minimums and more accessory dwelling units. But what we need to agree on is what we're going to do to ensure that the market is regulated in a way where it has to meet the demands of people who are at the bottom as well. And that's what 50% AMI does. Thank you.
Our next, our next speakers are Nick Petrillo, Shirley Hardy, and Maxwell Trueblood.
Good afternoon. My name is Nick Petrillo. I'm a board member for the Brighton Heights RCO, but I am here speaking only on my own behalf. I'm here to urge you to pass this entire zoning package, including inclusionary zoning citywide. So I didn't grow up in Pittsburgh. I grew up way over in Westmoreland County. And to me, Pittsburgh was the big city, and it was a place I always wanted to live. When I came into college in 2007, my parents, misguided as they may have been, provided me a list of places to make sure not to go, and one was East Liberty. Now, doesn't matter how much I make, I probably couldn't afford a place in East Liberty. After I graduated, I remember hearing about this up-and-coming neighborhood named Lawrenceville. That was 2012. It would have been nice if I could have bought then, but that's where we are. Anyway, I very much love Brighton Heights, by the way. So if this isn't passed, I guess my question is, where do you think someone will be listing other neighborhoods in 20 or 30 years where they can no longer afford anything? So why is this happening? Well, it's happening because Pittsburgh is great and people want to live here. And I, you know, whenever people want to live someplace, they're going to want to come there. Sorry, that didn't make sense. Anyway, I'm here to urge you to pass inclusionary zoning and parking reform and accessory dwelling units. Because if Pittsburgh is truly for everyone, then we can't chase out those who can't afford the market rate rents. So some who oppose IZ, they like to point to Austin as an example. They made it easier to build housing. They built more housing than Pittsburgh. If you take from 2015 to 2023, the average rent in Pittsburgh and in Austin increased by the same amount, a little over 30%. So the real truth is, like, in opposition to suburbanization a year, a century ago, people want to live in cities more now. That means that rent is going to go up everywhere. Building a lot of housing might bend the cost curve and make it not raise as much, but it's not going to deliver deeply affordable housing units. So I think it's also key to focus that this bill, it only reserves a bit of housing for affordable. Let's be honest, the need is higher than that. There should be robust public housing construction occurring in Pittsburgh. It should have started a long time ago. But I read the capital budget. I know that's not happening anytime soon. So what are we left with? Should we sacrifice poor Pittsburghers on the altar of economic progress? I don't think so, and I don't think you guys want to either. Should we play whack-a-mole and try and guess which neighborhoods are going to be hot over the next 20 or 30 years? I don't think any of us here are clairvoyant and can do that. So let's pass citywide IZ. Let's make it work. It's a very Pittsburgh thing to do. Let's do the best with what we've got together. Thank you.
Is Shirley Hardy with us? If not, Maxwell Trueblood, Steva Gay, and Alyssa Grishman. Excuse me? So just going to, Maxwell Trueblood? Steva Gay? Alyssa Grisham?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, I apologize.
My own mother has called me Alyssa three times, so I give up. So hi, I am Alyssa Grishman. I live in Uptown. I am one of Councilman Lovell's constituents. I am strongly, strongly in favor of passing the entire package, including the IZ. There's nothing I can say that could be more powerful than Tanisha and Laura and Mark. So just, I'm echoing them in their support of it. We've said several times that IZ is a start and not the end-all-be-all, and I just want to point out that one group that has not been mentioned once today at all is the disability community. And the fact that we don't just need affordable housing, we need affordable, accessible housing. I live on $1,047 a month. That's less than rent in most places. And thankfully, I had a rich relative die, and so I had enough money to buy a house. I am really friggin' lucky. And if it weren't for that, I wouldn't be able to live in this city anymore. Even as-is, the only place I could find to live, I have to keep my wheelchair in the garage and walk up and down a flight of stairs, which is harder and harder every day. People with disabilities are getting pushed out of the city because none of the housing being built is being built with universal design in mind. If you build a house that is accessible, anyone can live in it. You don't have to be disabled to live in an accessible house. So I think we really need to push for in future bills, I don't want to say, oh, no, don't pass IZ today, it's not good enough. Pass IZ today. But please, for future bills, you know, we need to have an emphasis on accessible housing. The waitlist for affordable, accessible housing in the city of Pittsburgh is years long, literally years long. And I mean, that's bull. I'm usually more eloquent, I usually write up my remarks. I'm sorry I didn't do that, but like, you know, anyone and everyone can become disabled at any point during their lives, and people want to stay in their homes. So please, put an emphasis on accessible homes so that people can live and die in their homes, people can, you know, and not die from falling down the stairs in their homes. Yeah, that's, that's all for today. So thank you so much.
I have Cheryl Stevens, followed by Emily Howe, followed by Robert Malakoff.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Stevens. I live in Aspen Wall, and I'm here to ask you to vote yes on citywide inclusionary zoning. And I'm strongly in favor of seeing this policy go forward for our future. I also want to strongly re-up what Alyssa said about accessible housing. That's the only reason my grandma was able to age in place in her house. We're a multi-generational household, so I just want to make sure that that was heard. I actually grew up in Councilman Gross's district, District 7. And when I accepted a job back home in the city of Pittsburgh, I wasn't able to find an apartment that met the qualifications for my budget of rent, utilities, being near a bus stop, and routes that I need to go to work, visit my family that was safe and walkable in all seasons, and within the time trajectory that I needed. When you're renting, you don't really have the luxury of financial incentives or things like time. And I feel like we are running out of time. And so that's why I'm asking you all to choose to do the right thing. Inclusionary zoning is, as many people have said, one tool in a toolbox to put the city of Pittsburgh on a path to address deeply harmful policies, things like redlining that declined, that had families declined for loans for homes. And devalued neighborhoods just because of who was there. And then businesses, business owners were declined loans, things like small stores, bakeries, restaurants, amenities that people like to have in their communities, things like public transit routes were limited to the borders of neighborhoods, and access has been restricted to many of them. Inclusionary zoning is a proven way to create affordability in the places that people want to call home. It can reduce displacement of longtime residents and intentionally facilitate both racially and economic diversity in communities, which benefits everyone. You have the chance to stand up for us, for your constituents, for Pittsburghers, and to move toward addressing the harmful history and honestly present of segregation in the city of Pittsburgh, and to make sure that Pittsburgh neighborhoods are not for sale. Housing is something that shouldn't be hoarded or traded or a topic of conversation at a nighttime extracurricular club. It is a location of stability to raise a family, to celebrate birthdays, to watch the Steelers game, to decorate, and to call your own. So I'm asking you to make an important decision that supports racial diversity, mixed-income neighborhoods, mixed, mixed-income neighborhoods with inclusionary zoning, and connecting low-cost housing to robust transit, walkable communities, sidewalks, and more. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Emily Howe. I live in...oh, hello and thank you, City Council, for your time today. I'm Emily Howe. I've been a resident of Upper Lawrenceville for seven years. And I'm here today because I'm in favor of passing the full zoning amendment package. I currently serve on the boards of Lawrenceville United and City of Bridges Community Land Trust, but in providing this testimony is my own personal opinion as a resident of a city neighborhood that already follows IZ, the IZ ordinance, and as a resident who cares deeply about the harms my neighbors are facing due to displacement and a lack of affordable housing. So to understand why it's important for City Council to pass the citywide amendment package, including the IZ ordinance, we need to, citywide ordinance, we need to understand the shape of the housing problem here in Pittsburgh. So while everyone who testifies here today will likely recognize the housing shortage we face here in Pittsburgh, those not in favor of IZ have downplayed or not even mentioned who is most harmed when the city does not have sufficient affordable housing. So rents have been rising in Pittsburgh, as we know. Based on the city's presentation, right, 43% of Pittsburgh renters are now cost burdened, meaning they spend more than 30% of their household income on rent. And so while this can impact Pittsburghers of all income levels, those who are particularly harmed are low-income and middle-income Pittsburghers, who have less discretionary income and so are more susceptible to eviction and being pushed out of the city completely. So it's just one salient example. This year marks the 10-year anniversary of the mass displacement of Penn Plaza, where over 200 low-income people were forced out of East Liberty due to private developers. And so 10 years later, you know, we have an empty lot, Whole Foods, and commercial offices to show for that mass displacement. And the displacement is not a one-off. Between 2010 and 2020, as rents and housing prices increased, the Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group reports a 13.4% decrease in the black population across the city. In addition, I looked up 2024 data today from the American Community Survey, and it shows the black population here continues to decline. And so ultimately, the private market does not promote creating affordable housing units. The opponents of this bill provide no alternative policy other than a misguided faith in supply and demand, which has failed thus far to create affordable housing here and elsewhere in the US. Or, as an earlier anti-IZ testimony stated, and I quote, "Capital doesn't care about affordable housing. It cares about return on investment," end quote. So without policy changes and the incentives built into IZ and the other housing amendments, we will continue the current status quo of building housing that is unaffordable for low- and moderate-income households. And so let me be clear, there's no silver bullet, as many people have already stated, to create affordable housing. This is just one important tool in our tool belts, along with the other tools in the housing amendment package. And so I implore City Council to please vote in favor of the amendments, including IZ, to affirm your commitment to affordable housing for all. Thank you.
Is Robert Malakoff with us?
Yes. I'm Bob Malakoff from Allagani West. You all seem to be blindly following the playbook of the pro-developer, anti-zoning YIMBY group from San Francisco, a city not known for its affordable housing. Three minutes is not really enough time to discuss this legislation, so in case I get cut off mid-sentence, I will start with a conclusion. In over 50 years living in the city of Pittsburgh, I had always thought that the zoning ordinance would protect me from unreasonable development in my neighborhood. Thanks to the mayor, planning department, and council, I no longer believe that. How do you explain to your constituents in the many city neighborhoods that strongly rely on the availability of on-street parking and have trouble finding a parking space near their home, that deleting on-street parking requirements would not make things harder for them? Many people walk to work, bike to work, or take public transportation also own cars. Also, many of the jobs in the area are not easily accessed by public transportation. The logic is that if you can't park your car, you will get rid of it. Another likely scenario is that people will park their cars in Dormont, Monahol, Mount Lebanon, or some other suburb thanks to their new suburban homes. Then there's the auxiliary dwelling units. They're known as granny flats. Personally, I did not like the idea of granny living in a shack in my backyard. Actually, I don't like the idea of me living in a shack in my daughter's backyard. More likely, they will be rental units for non-family members. And because the city council is either unwilling or unable to come up with a legal short-term rental legislation, that's what they will become. That will add to the on-street parking problem and essentially eliminate the popular concept of single-family or two-family properties. If a neighborhood has to be, have multifamily, it should be rezoned. You don't have to change the ordinance. I agree with the article in yesterday's Post Hizzard about inclusionary zoning not really being effective, and many speakers today agreed with that. Extending this failed policy is not necessarily a good idea. These changes were proposed by a planning department hired by Mayor Ganim. He was rejected by the voters in his reelection bid, and his zoning plans should also be rejected until such time that the new mayor and his people can review it, since they're the ones who will have to live with it for at least the next four years. City planning has developed a technique to make a show of gathering public input and then doing whatever they want it to do in the first place. This legislation will cause problems for existing neighborhood residents and still do very little to promote affordable housing.
Thank you. We have Mark Noble, followed by Adam Mastandrea, and Zach Henshaw.
Hello, Council. My name is Adam Mastandrea, and just to be clear, I'm opposed, it's in favor on the sheet there. So I lived in the city most of my life, and I've been a 20-year member and a representative for Labor's Local 373. Represent over 1,500 members in building construction and 20,000 members in the building trade as a whole. I'm opposed, like I said, to the inclusionary zoning, as is currently written. It will negatively affect our union construction, as it will undermine local wages because the construction costs are not adjusted for these artificially low rents, which will mean one of two things. I mean, either, like people have said in the past, either developers are not going to build, or they're going to build non-union. And you just got to look at Lawrenceville right now. I'm not opposed to affordable housing, but one way to afford housing is to create more good-paying union jobs, not less. So I ask you to vote no on the IZ. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Zach Henshaw with us? If not, next is Mallory Brangin, followed by Jay Rubik and Michael Cummins.
All right, I timed it really well. Hi. My name is Mallory Brangin. I live at 5158 Carnegie Street. I'm speaking today in favor of passing inclusionary zoning in Pittsburgh. I know today that everything that can be said about what makes IZ beneficial to the immediate future of Pittsburgh and to the long-term development of our city will be said today. It's been said a few times now. We've been here for months, some of us for years, working to add a zoning policy that is both fairly simple in concept and very complex in its potential ramification. is both fairly simple in concept and very complex in its potential ramifications. IZ is not a silver bullet policy. It is just one piece of a larger package that you ripped apart and delayed to pass. We are here today because developers don't want their profits to go down one bit, and it's worth it for them to fight tooth and nail to maintain the status quo. We are here because the status quo is not good enough. The city has been taking...the city has not been taking care of our existing housing stock, and we have not built enough housing units that can be bought or rented by those who live here. Thousands have been displaced outside of the city. The problem is so big and so old that there isn't one solution. But what is not acceptable is continuing to delay on the zoning amendments that came to you recommended by the Planning Commission. It is obvious that enough members of this council are untouched by the housing crisis in Pittsburgh that you can sit there and say, "We don't need this." I don't think IZ is going to pass today, which is disappointing. The political money of builders, the wealthy folks who want to keep their neighborhoods white, the people who have been convinced that this change will somehow hurt them, those forces were powerful and fairly organized. But the housing affordability crisis is also not going away today. And as things continue to worsen, it also becomes possible to bring more and more people into our organizing. The people who are here today to speak to you about inclusionary zoning...wait, wrong side of the draft. All right. As more and more people are impacted by what it means to live in a city that isn't built for them, they will come here to tell you about it. And as those things continue to worsen, it also becomes possible to bring them into our organizing. So why am I here? Why do I want you to pass this? Because I want to live in this city when I am old. As long as real estate is the driving market power in this city, as long as I am not a billionaire, I am at risk of displacement. It is my hope that we will be able to build a movement that you cannot ignore, or one that will unseat you, and then we can have more councilors who want to build a city for everyone, not just wealthy newcomers. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jay Rubik, and I'm a representative of Labor's Local 373 and a resident of the city of Pittsburgh for the past nineteen years. I'm opposed to the inclusionary zoning proposal as it's written. It will deter development and undermine local wages...excuse me, which means less jobs for me and my union brothers and sisters in the building construction trades.
Thank you. Is Michael Cummins with us? If not, the next three are Russell Taylor, Kevin Seklekli, and Camille McMillan. Russell Taylor. Camille McMillan. Yvonne Rainey. Rutha Bhatt.
Yes, HUD, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to comment. I am Trata Bhatt. I am a research analyst at Pittsburgh Community Reinvestment Group, and I am a resident of Shady Side Neighborhood. I'm speaking here today to support inclusionary zoning and other zoning amendments being discussed today. As several people have said, inclusionary zoning and, in reality, no single policy can have the burden of solving the affordability crisis today, but IZ has something unique that a lot of other affordable housing policies don't have. Inclusionary zoning not only increases affordable units' production, but also promotes mixed-income, mixed-racial communities that are so important for opening doors of economic mobility for low-moderate-income families. The market on its own and other popular affordable housing policies also cannot do this, and that is why we really need IZ. The latest American Community Survey data tells us that Pittsburgh city has doubled the families...doubled the families earning more than one-hundred-and-fifty K a year and lost more than twenty thousand families earning less than fifty thousand in the last seven years. National research has shown that even if the initial passing of a new policy like IZ can send a temporary shock, on the long-term, IZ is successful in creating affordable housing in high-opportunity neighborhoods without disrupting the average yearly rate of new development. However, it is also very important to craft IZ policy well to reap its benefits, and Pittsburgh's IZ policy has been carefully shaped over many years and borrows from the best practices of other IZ policies in the country. A study conducted by HUD or the Housing and Land Development Authority says, and I quote, "That developers considered IZ to be merely another matter to factor into their planning and perform our calculations and not a reason to avoid development activities in the counties." Consumers have benefited from the IZ ordinance requirements that affordable units be comparable in quality with market-rate units," unquote. With that, I urge the City Council to pass this bill, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. I want to go back to Michael Cummins. Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, didn't work the first time. My name is Mike Cummins. I am a city resident, been on residential construction field for my whole career, as well as being a small, local landlord and a rental property owner. I'm here in both my professional and personal capacities to urge Council to support IZ and all proposed zoning reforms. As the other provisions are less controversial, I'll simply state my support of those and focus on IZ. For this quarter, I do not operate in a twenty-plus-unit sphere, so I have no direct financial interest at stake. If anything, I might lose some potential tenants or rent values if there are more affordable market...or units on the market. While IZ does have some significant costs in large-scale development, the proposed changes to parking requirements outside IZU, et cetera, are all what we call pro-developer, that they open new opportunities for reduced costs and increase profit potential. It was smart and very fair to package all these benefits to help offset added costs associated with providing affordable units and large developments. I think it is shameful to watch certain interests try to chop this very fair package up and only pass the parts that make developers more money. Specifically on the citywide IZ, we need to be proactive, chasing down which neighborhood is booming next. To add it to the IZ list is a losing proposition. Developers will scramble to build in the next hot zone that isn't yet IZ until it becomes IZ, which will screech that neighborhood to a halt on many larger projects. The next hotspot will take off, once and repeat. These aggressive-paced improvements and sudden abandonment of large projects in a neighborhood is disruptive and less beneficial to the city than a longer-term, more gradual progression spread across more neighborhoods. There's also a business principle here. Businesspeople are more confident, more willing to invest in a climate of higher certainty, even more so than one with lower but less certain costs. The prospect of a project that was planned without IZ, then potentially having to meet IZ because the neighborhood decided it, is more of a deterrent in starting...to starting a project than planning ahead for known higher costs. Developers will tell you anything about this, including publishing dubious data, since if you buy their claims, they can make more money. But this is the reality. Knowing that you can do development in any neighborhood that makes sense for the project without fear of a sudden cost change, like the addition of IZ later, allows developers to operate with more confidence and to develop in more areas of the city simultaneously. It's better both for the city and in some ways the developers. Let's get an even, predictable playing field across the city with IZ, also pass all the other reforms around parking, ADUs, et cetera, so that our whole city can move forward in a way that benefits all of us, not just developer profits. Specifically regarding ADUs, I also propose that we restrict using them for full-time SDR use, but not banning SDRs across the city, as we discussed this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Rhonda Strozer, followed by Maya Fischkopf, and then Sharon Karas.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Council. I am Rhonda Strozer, the Executive Director of Fineview and Perry Hill Top Citizens Council. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here to voice my strong support for inclusionary zoning, the bill currently before you. Let me begin with this. We are in a housing crisis. That is not just rhetoric, it's reality. It's felt by families watching rent eat up half their income, by workers commuting hours because they can't afford to live where they work, and by communities seeing neighbors priced out of the very blocks they helped to build. Black and low-income residents are being pushed to the margins economically, geographically, and politically. Generations of disinvestment and displacement have left many just one rent hike away from being uprooted. This bill is a chance to show that trend. To say clearly, we will not abandon the people who have held this city together. We've heard concerns from developers that building will slow, that profits will shrink. But here's the truth: we can build, we can profit, and we can still protect people. Equitable growth is not just possible, it's necessary. And it starts with requiring that new developments include affordable homes. Let's talk about wages. Many residents are supporting entire households on twelve to sixteen dollars an hour. That's not enough to afford the rising cost of rent, especially when affordable units are increasingly rare. This isn't just about homelessness, it's about survival. It's about dignity, it's about making sure that teachers, bus drivers, home health aides, and service workers, the backbone of this city, aren't pushed out. I understand no policy is perfect, but waiting for perfect is how we end up with nothing. This bill gives us a starting point, a foundation we can study, adjust, and improve, but we have to act now. The city calls itself inclusive, progressive, forward-thinking, but we can't claim those values if we allow gentrification to erase black neighborhoods, or if we force low-wage workers into impossible choices between rent, food, and healthcare. What kind of city are we building if it only works for the wealthy? Passing this legislation isn't radical, it's responsible. It's how we build a future rooted in fairness, not fear. So I urge you to vote yes on inclusionary zoning, and let's take a real step forward in a city that works for everyone. Thank you.
Is Maya Fischkopf with us? Nicole Gallagher?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is Nicole Gallagher. I am a resident of Spring Hill. I am also a community organizer with Pittsburghers Republic Transit. And I want to echo what a lot of folks have already said, especially to Nisha and Laura and Alyssa about accessible, affordable housing. I'd like to ask you to vote yes on this whole housing package, including inclusionary zoning. As Pittsburgh continues to evolve to be her best self, we have literally seen some of the opposite of her best, with thousands and thousands of residents displaced from their homes, families, and neighborhoods. We've seen developers come in and change generations of neighborhood history. In particular, black residents of Pittsburgh have suffered the worst harm as the city sits back and allows the private market to, quote, "solve the housing crisis for them." Pittsburgh residents deserve to grow and stay in their homes. They deserve to enjoy their neighborhoods as they gain greater transit access, better sidewalks, and pedestrian infrastructure, as there are more shops and parks to walk to with their families. All Pittsburghers deserve a chance to live in newly-proposed developments. They deserve to be safe where they're from. It's not...this should not just be for wealthy families and wealthy people to have. As it stands, we have become a more segregated city, where black and working-class residents have less access to vital resources. But you, councilpeople, you as city leaders have a chance to repair the harm that has been done and bring about a future better than what we had in the past. Yes, this is not a silver bullet. Everyone's saying that, sure, great. But inclusionary zoning at a citywide level will level the housing playing field for all Pittsburghers, reintegrating our neighborhoods, providing equal opportunities for all residents. Everyone is richer and benefits from racially and economically diverse neighborhoods. Please vote yes on citywide inclusionary zoning and this entire housing package. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Casey McGill.
Hello, my name's Casey McGill. Nice to see y'all. What, is it eight hours later? I am from Northside, but I've lived in probably eight different locations, probably half of your city council districts, because I've been displaced multiple times because of rising rent costs. I've been a renter in the city of Pittsburgh for twelve years. I came here to attend University of Pittsburgh, and I decided to stay. I know a lot of my friends' families, members who want to stay in Pittsburgh that have not been able to afford it. They simply have had to move out. A lot of folks living in Swissville, a lot of folks moving to Philadelphia. We want to...I want to keep my community in Pittsburgh, and I know a lot of folks have talked...brought up a lot of issues, and it is, what, now almost 6:00 P.M.? So I won't reiterate, but I do want to bring up one point. There is...Pittsburgh is a union town, as we always say, and we really need to make sure that when we're having these conversations, to bring up labor, unions, and our community. And when I've seen the most change, it's been when we've been able to negotiate and talk to and think about jobs, development, and housing, and affordability. And we know that there are growing union, non-union contractors in the city, like Brangio. And we would stand unarmed with the building trades and City Council tomorrow to make them a union contractor. We can't pit workers against each other, especially when we're talking about affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lovett Williams III.
Good afternoon, esteemed City Council. My name is Lovett Williams. I'm the former president of Construction General Labor's Local 373. I now act in their capacity as the Community Outreach Director. I've been a member of Labor's Local 373 for forty-six years, and have lived in the city for most of my life. One-third of Local 373's membership lives in the city of Pittsburgh. I grew up in the city, while I'm definitely not against affordable housing. I am not against affordable housing, but I am opposed to the inclusionary zoning proposal as it is written, because it will likely affect all fifteen-hundred of my members, my union brothers and sisters, that this worked that they potentially could not get. So what we do is we...we're inclusive of each other. We fund our own training centers. So if anybody wants to come to us, they will get trained, we will pay for it. We pay for our own pension fund. We pay for our own healthcare. We don't ask anybody for anything. We do this all ourselves. But what we're asking you for, esteemed council, is to vote no on this inclusionary zoning, and another thing, we do not discriminate. We'll take all comers. Anybody that wants to come to us, we welcome you with open arms. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Candace Kane. I've lived in Fineview for thirty-four years.
I've lived in Fineview for 34 years. I asked the city council to vote no on eliminating off-street parking minimums, and vote no on allowing two accessory dwelling units per lot when you have not yet licensed and regulated short-term rentals. At a minimum, postpone a vote on these two amendments to avoid creating harm in Fineview. We already have too little on-street parking, and we are overrun with Airbnbs. For some time now, city government has embraced YIMBY proposals originating in California when changing Pittsburgh zoning code citywide. The YIMBY idea is that densifying the city's housing increases supply that will trickle down to the market and lower prices. It's Reaganomics 2.0. But Pittsburgh already has plenty of vacant land and old houses to repair. We cannot wait for the market to lower prices, if it ever does. What we need now is quality, affordable housing for families to repopulate our neighborhoods. Reaganomics dismantled the American dream, and we should reject California's YIMBY ideas. Instead, Pittsburgh should embrace what I now call Yinzer ideas. Yinzer proposals are crafted by Pittsburghers for each Pittsburgh neighborhood, not one-size-fits-all. For example, in the 1990s and 2000s, all of Fineview residents were welcomed to work with the Northside Leadership Conference and its architect. During that time, we built at least 30 affordable, single-family houses on small lots with attractive features such as front porches, three bedrooms, one-and-a-half baths, and off-street parking. The houses took advantage of Fineview's best features, its views, hills, wooded areas. We attracted diverse families to become homeowners, Fineview grew. I know, because I was there. Many original families still live in their houses and are called "my long-term neighbors." I call this the Yinzer way. Since that time, housing development in Fineview changed from being a whole neighborhood effort to just a few people making decisions behind closed doors. Community nonprofit corporations are not required to open their decision-making to residents. Existing residents are no longer participants in housing decisions and are not informed of plans until they are set. Instead of embracing neighborhood residents and developing plans, the new method is to treat existing neighbors as the enemy and call them names. Furthermore, zoning isn't the enemy, any more than restrictive deed covenants are the enemy. They are tools that in the past have been used in a racist manner. However, those same deed covenants are now used to preserve affordability. Likewise, zoning can be used to keep neighborhoods appealing as a place to live long-term. Finally, Pittsburgh needs more homeownership, more homes for multi-generation families, and more home repair assistance. Deeper subsidies from multiple sources are needed.
Very much.
I'll close there.
We have Tucker Miller by Marcia Bandez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tucker, and I am a renter in Beachview. My fiancee and I moved to Pittsburgh about two months ago when she started a job as a substance abuse counselor. We've wanted to return to Appalachia for years, and the Paris of Appalachia was always our dream. Only after a couple of months here, I can easily say it is the best place I've ever lived. First, I want to recognize the positives of this bill, especially the provisions on accessory dwelling units and parking reform. Those are great, those are needed, but IZ risks vastly undermining any positives those would make. I understand the appeal of IZ. On the surface, it seems fair. Set aside some affordable units and new developments, have developers foot the bill, and you reduce affordability. It appeals to the part of us that wants an immediate and visible fix. But policy shouldn't be judged by its intentions. It has to be judged by its results. And if we want to seriously address housing affordability, we need to admit that IZ does not solve the problem. In fact, it risks making the housing shortage worse. I assume everyone here knows rent control is a terrible policy. Well, IZ is not as catastrophic, but has a similar result: not enough housing being built. It seems that an underlying assumption of IZ supporters is that adding market-rate housing won't affect the prices of units in the surrounding area or somehow increase them. But basically, all the credible evidence we have shows that new housing lowers costs or slows cost increases. For example, a 2019 study from the Upjohn Institute in the Philadelphia Fed found that new market-rate apartment buildings lowered nearby rents by 5% to 7%. In other words, today's so-called luxury apartments have the immediate effect of making nearby housing more affordable, and those new units will age and become tomorrow's affordable housing. Other cities have experienced declines in rents by simply allowing more housing to be built, not by layering on IZ. Those here that support IZ are concerned about gentrification, and I understand that. And to a lot of you here, I'm a part of that problem. But gentrification happens before any new buildings pop up. The real driver of gentrification is failing to build enough homes. IZ locks us into not building enough, ensuring the very people it aims to protect are eventually priced out. I'm committed to building a life in Pittsburgh, and I want to see it succeed and grow, and I want more people to call Pittsburgh their home. If we are serious about proving a life here, if we are serious about housing abundance, if we are serious about fairness and affordability, we need to encourage building new housing of all types, not discourage it, which is what IZ will probably do. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Zepko?
Hello?
Yes.
Marcia Bandez?
Okay, you may begin. We'll go, we'll follow her with Kelly. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you, Ms. Bandez.
Shit, I just hung up.
Well, now we can hear you.
Now you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Thank you so much, and I apologize for my lack of technical skills here. So first off, my name is Marcia Bandez. I live in Squirrel Hill, and I fully support IZ, inclusionary zoning, in every neighborhood in Pittsburgh, and I do sincerely hope that my councilmember, Erica Strasberger, sees the value in providing additional, safe, affordable housing in every neighborhood. I understand that developers are putting the press on that they won't be able to afford to build in Pittsburgh in certain neighborhoods if they have to include two affordable units out of every 20. They just can't make the numbers work. Stop and think about that. These two units are not for free. People will be paying something, and these units are not unique. Whether the developers are buying cinder blocks, wallboard, or washing machines, they are each part of one big order that they're going to place anyway. And these developers are saying that they still can't find a way to make a profit? There is a demand for housing in Pittsburgh. If some developers can't find a way to close the gap without the city including discounts and incentives for everything except the kitchen sink, there are other developers who are capable of figuring it out, and we've seen them, and we've seen the results. And while I'm on the phone, I just want to point out that families are leaving Pittsburgh. It's been mentioned a couple of other times. Schools are closing. I'm not sure how many of you have had time to read the Controller's Report on Housing. Affordable housing for seniors has held steady, affordable housing for families has fallen off a cliff. From the Housing Authority MTW Annual Report, in 2006, there were 9,356 units for families. In 2022, there were 5,999. That's a decline of 35.9%. Rising housing costs have pushed over 10,000 black residents out of the city in the last decade alone. I know many have mentioned that. How many of them were families? Who's supposed to be going to these schools? You might say that inclusionary zoning doesn't create many units, but I say ask the people who have gotten them if they feel the same way. Inclusionary zoning is not a panacea, but it unequivocally helps. And in order to help families in Pittsburgh, we need every tool we have. I believe other people have said it more eloquently than I have, but I do hope that you vote for inclusionary zoning and the rest of the package. We need it. We need it as a tool, it will help many people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I thought I saw Kelly Svenkso join? There we go.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, I apologize. Kelly was having issues unmuting, so you have me, Ian Sheiko. I'm the Associate Executive Director of the Apartment Association of Metropolitan Pittsburgh, also known as AMP. For more than 50 years, AMP has been the voice for the multifamily industry in Pittsburgh and throughout southwestern Pennsylvania. Today, the portfolios of AMP owners and manager members comprise approximately 100,000 apartment units. AMP's members also include multifamily developers, investors, financial institutions, suppliers, subcontractors, and utilities, all working within the multifamily industry. I am speaking here today with respect to the inclusionary zoning components in Council Bill 2025-1545. In 2022, a sister trade organization, the Builders Association of Metropolitan Pittsburgh, also known as BAMF, filed suit against the city of Pittsburgh in the United States District Court for the Western Pennsylvania, for the Western, for the Western District of Pennsylvania, challenging the city's adoption of its inclusionary zoning ordinance. The compliance challenges in that ordinance infringe on the rights of members protected by both the United States and Pennsylvania constitutions, as well as violate the laws governing municipalities operating under Pennsylvania's Home Rule and Optional Plan laws. This litigation is still pending in federal court. With this statement, AMP urged the city council not to consider expanding inclusionary zoning overlay and ordinance requirements until after the courts have fully considered the legality of the original ordinance. To do so otherwise would cause undue confusion and cause immediate harm. City council, please respect the judicial process and wait. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Bosco.
Hello, members of council. Good evening. I want to thank those of you that are present here and able to keep your attention on the conversation, not on your phones. I'm fortunate enough to own my own home in Brookline, but that is not the case for many of our residents. For too many, the rent is too high, and they're being forced out. So I'm here today to ask you to follow the recommendation of the Plane Commission and vote for Bill 1545. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ikona Halmaukina, followed by Connor Hayes.
Greetings and good day. My title is Chief Ikona Halmaukina. Bill 1545 only represents special interest groups who seek to further gentrify and marginalize people who have already been kept out, left out, and now priced out of neighborhoods that their lineage has its roots historically in. What the city needs is a more meaningful approach to affordability. Agencies such as the URA, TREC, Thousand Authority, and the City Planning Commission created this housing crisis by tearing down hundreds of units across the city and throughout this country. And now, during the rebuilding phase, the displaced people are no longer considered for the very houses in areas to which they used to live in, and they're unaffordable units. These are the very people currently struggling to find low-income or affordable housing due to this carefully crafted deceptive legislation. Does it make sense to tear down houses across the city only to turn around and say, "We have a housing crisis"? This is like starting a fire, later returning to the scene screaming, "Fire, fire, fire". I urge you to extinguish Bill 1545 and shift the balance of power towards the needs of the city's most vulnerable population. In 1937, the United States Housing Act was established, eventually giving way to housing projects. Pittsburgh adopted in August, August 26 of 1937, first in the nation to do so. Leading that charge was Dorothy May Richardson. Congratulations, city council. You all have single-handedly dismantled all of the provisions implemented by Dorothy May Richardson, who worked tirelessly to ensure housing was accessible, affordable, safe, and sanitary. Let's contain the legacy of Dorothy Richardson and be a model leader, resisting the follower I ask you all, and be the leaders that you all were elected to be. This is not California, nor do we want it to become California. I would urge you to vote this bill down. As many others have eloquently spoken about, Pittsburgh used to be affordable. People knew it was affordable, that's why they came here. Rent was for a single house, or a one-bedroom house, 500; two-bedroom, 600; three-bedroom, 700. The list goes on, four-bedroom, 800. $800 that people paid for a four-bedroom home.
Thank you. Is Connor Hayes with us? Next is Brennan Conway. Next is Sarah Trubovic.
Hello, this is Sarah. Hi, I'm Sarah Trubovic. I'm a resident of Highland Park, and Executive Director of Lawrenceville Corporation. I am speaking today in support of the Housing Needs Assessment Legislation. All Pittsburghers, regardless of race, age, income, deserve a safe, affordable place to call home, to raise their families, and live a vibrant, full life. As many people have said today, IZ is just one tool that can help with affordability, but as the Executive Director of Lawrenceville Corporation, I have seen firsthand that IZ, the current IZ overlay district, has worked well in Lawrenceville, with 35 units built and occupied, and another 80 in the pipeline as approved projects. There is currently a long waiting list at our 201, demonstrating the need and desire for units that are in Lawrenceville. Many others have already spoken on the benefits, and I just, I want to, I concur with those comments. I just want to support the housing reforms package, because only a comprehensive approach will address Pittsburgh's housing crisis. I encourage you to pass Bill 1545 today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Allison Keating, followed by Elizabeth Bean.
Hey, my name is Allison Keating. I live in Manchester. I echo what a lot of people have said. I think it's interesting that we're spending so much time talking about IZ when, you know, it really is going to produce very few units. The hemming and hawing over it is just, is so overblown. There are subsidies for it, you know, you know. In addition to the guaranteed city LERTA, developers can apply for the public school and county LERTAs. I wholly endorse both of those being simplified. But, you know, like, one of the really great things about this is that instead of having to do, instead of having to spend $450,000 on a Lytec unit, you know, like, these private developers who are not taking federal funding can build these units for about 250. And then, and then, you know, like, they are allowed to take Section 8 unit, they do not have to, but, you know, like, that's, like, I mean, like, this is such a win-win. It gets rid of a lot of, like, other red tape, you know, and, yeah, it is only going to build, you know, a small number of units, but like, it's also not like the main thing. It, for whatever reason, it rises to the top. It's the thing that sets people off the most, and I don't totally understand why. But, yeah, like, you know, like, the minimum lot size and the Fair Housing Amendments, which are sitting behind this, you know, like, those are both going to produce way more units than this is. But, yeah, so I hope that you approve this, and if it doesn't work, improve it later. You can fix it later. It is okay to come back to this next year and fix it, or whenever it stops working, go and fix it, do it. All right, thank you, that's all. All right, thank you. That's all.
Elizabeth Bean, I believe, is with us.
Yes, I'm here. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Bean. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you. I would like to say I'm very much for affordable housing. However, I'm very much against IZ as the method to make this happen. I think that it will stunt the flexibility, that it will stunt the goal to increase housing, and we know that housing is needed in Pittsburgh. I'm directly in contact with the unhoused population on a regular basis as I work in an emergency department here in Pittsburgh, and I would really love for our housing situation to improve. This just is not an effective way to achieve that. I am, however, very excited about other parts of the comprehensive plan, such as abolishing the parking minimums, and it would be amazing if there was an increase in legalization of accessory dwelling units. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Holtz, followed by Vlad Lungu.
Hello, I'm Dr. Harvey Holtz, for those who were not here a few days ago. I'm from East Liberty. This is really rough. I don't know how you people are surviving this. I don't know whether my bladder or my brain would burst first, but this is rough. So I'm going to support the bill with a certain caveat because of what I've heard today, both explicitly and implicitly, but I can't tell you much why, but I don't have time. Someone here made the most profound statement I have heard in the longest time. He doesn't realize why it is profound. He considers it to be universal, but it is so amazing, and that is simply three words: Capital doesn't care. Capital doesn't care. They, in building, they don't care whether you are housed or unhoused or poorly housed. They don't care anything about what happens to you. All they care about is profit. What kind of a society do we live in where the prime movers in some industry don't care about the people? How can we have good things arise? Now, the problem would be to eliminate profit, eliminate developers and landlords, and make housing a human right. Pay a living wage and a social wage to everyone. This will take the area, the area of affordability out. The caveat is make sure unions build houses. Every worker should have a union. And deal effectively with racialized structures. There's something behind every social problem. Behind wars, we have capital defense contractors. They don't care whether you live or die. Behind healthcare, we have insurance companies. Capital doesn't care. Between pharmaceuticals, we have drug companies. Capital doesn't care. Behind capital crises, the bankers. Capital doesn't care. Behind climate change, the destruction of our civilization, fossil fuel companies don't care. Capital doesn't care. They all have one thing in common: they are capitalists, and they exist in a system of capitalism, a system where the prime movers, one of the two antagonists, doesn't care. Now, let's begin with the fact that prospect of homelessness has emerged just in the last 400 years, of the 300 years of Homo sapiens sapiens. Oh, boy, that didn't work out. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. That takes us to Vlad Lungu.
Hello, my name is Vlad Lungu, and I'm a resident of Highland Park. I am here today in support of inclusionary zoning. I've been working in affordable housing and nonprofit advocacy, as well as human services with the unhoused for about six years. The difference is from, from when I did live in Pittsburgh 15 years ago, and the price of housing has changed drastically. With this bill, it's a Band-Aid. I think both, both speakers, sides of, in support of inclusionary zoning or against it, have explained that it might not be a full fix, and this might not be the way to do it. I'm not sure what has been done otherwise. Currently, the script district is bringing up endless amounts of apartment buildings, and I just can't imagine why reserving 10% of those to be, remain affordable would be a problem. And that's why I support it citywide. Some districts have more funding and more money, others don't, but if we can share a little bit of the burden of affordability for housing, that would be great for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Hannah Blizzard, followed by Margie Thompson. I do not see Hannah. I do see Margie Thompson online.
My name is Margie Thompson, and I am a resident of Cary, and I am in support of citywide inclusionary zoning, just off the basis of seeing the faces and having an understanding of the people who are active in the Housing Justice Table. Like, this isn't just, like, haphazardly put together, a lot of time and effort and planning to develop it as it is, to even just get it to pass. Like, there's a lot of red tape. There is a lot of barriers. You have to appease certain politicians. So I think dealing with the uphill battle that they have with these ideas that some would consider radical, I think it's pretty good language, and I do believe someone had said earlier that it can be changed. Like, this isn't set in stone, but it is something to get the ball rolling, to protect lives right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Collins, followed by Matt Rubin. I don't see either. That moves us to Marimba Malions.
Hello, my name is Matthew Rubin. I'm an organizer at One in Pennsylvania, a resident of Beachview, and I'm here today to speak in favor of inclusionary zoning. I think by now we're really clear on what this is about. I think that we're really clear that the majority of people speaking, you know, on this today and in past conversations about this are supportive of inclusionary zoning, and I think we're clear that the groups representing, organizing, made up of, run by foreign working-class people in Pittsburgh, are overwhelmingly supportive of inclusionary zoning and really clear that it is a first step, not enough. And I think we're also really clear that the folks who oppose this primarily are, one, not as many as the people who support this, and primarily funded by developers. And so I think by now, people have said a lot of, like, very convincing stats for this and very confusing stats against this. I think the argument's really clear by now, and I guess it's just worth saying that we know, like, what's at stake here, and we know what these sides are, that it's a choice between standing with the people of the city and the idea that housing is a human right, and we should work towards that. And whether doing what the people of the city of Pittsburgh want, or doing what Ronald Capito wants. And I think that if you're choosing what Ronald Capito wants over the city of, the people, over the people of the city of Pittsburgh, then you should be ready for your campaign donations to be posted on a bill board, right alongside this, right alongside the statistics about our housing crisis and affordable housing crisis. Because that's, that is a violent choice, to displace people, to price people out, to push people out, and to choose that we are going to not even do the barest minimum to move towards the idea that housing should be a human right, regardless of the money you have. You know, and I just, I am mind-blown listening to this hearing and the idea that, like, we're supposed to accept the premise that the folks arguing against this are opposing inclusionary zoning because it doesn't do enough for renters, because it would raise prices. That's absurd. I look forward to Pro-Nousing PGH helping to lead the charge for rent, for rent control then, because, I mean, this isn't, this, like, it is the idea that this is a handout to landlords or whatever, the twisted logic we're supposed to accept it. This is about fundamentally, we're going to do the barest minimum to require some building affordable housing in the city. That's it. Housing is a human right is not a plaid slogan, it is the fact that doing anything short of working towards the reality where you can have a house regardless of the money you have is a human rights violation. To vote against this is a human rights violation. If housing is a human right, to not work towards that is a human rights violation that you are committing. In every single day that we don't take a step towards housing as a human right, we are violating human rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we have Marimba Malions.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Marimba Malions. I am President and CEO of the Hill Community Development Corporation. I'm an advocate for good governance, the brand that protects citizens, and a developer. The Hill CDC just built a new 4D unit building on Center Avenue that includes retail right in the heart of the Hill District. We own over 100 units of affordable and attainable housing, and we are engaged in a commercial development and currently redeveloping the historic New Granada in the heart of the city. The current phase comes at a price tag of $28 million, a project that has utilized union labor. From experience, I can tell you that development is hard. It takes ingenuity, rugged determination, creativity, and a lot of money. It is also hard, but more so, to be among the working poor. It takes a lot of ingenuity, a lot of determination, a lot of creativity, and probably even more money. The Pittsburgh metro area household income is about $72,500. Inside of the city, that drops to below $67,000. That gap shows us that our neighborhoods and residents are struggling more than the AMI suggests, with a shortage of over 800,000, with over 8,000 units of affordable housing for families out of below 30% of the area median income. That's working people. Food service workers making $15 an hour, personal care aides who take care of our parents, our uncles, our aunts, or even us if we get sick, health care support staff just above $17 an hour. These are the kind of people who are family, who are our family members, of some of the very union workers here today that are advocating against the bill. So I ask our union buddies on the labor side to come alongside the service workers to ensure that everyone can get a good working wage as well as affordable housing. Rising rents will hit seniors, disabled children, disabled persons, children, and especially single-income households hard. These are the people who will get hard, hit the hardest, and they are the people who can least afford to be hit at all. In fact, when we look at your districts, it's clear that your constituents need you to show up for them and pass this bill. According to the city's data, all of you need more attainable housing in your own council district. Council District Six, Councilwoman LaBelle, per capita income is $20,900. Councilman Sharland, District Six, District Three, your per capita income is $26,400. Councilman Wilson, District One, your per capita income is $34,400. District Two, Teresa Kell Smith, per capita income $33,800. Councilman Coghill, District Four, $29,900.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mary Barbusch.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak with you today. I am a resident of the North Side for more than 50 years, and unlike what has been said, I am somebody who is opposed to this bill as proposed, and I ask you to seek a more compromise approach that considers all of the needs. The way this is worded, it is, you know, only, it's considering those at risk over everyone else's needs. I was in a meeting last night, and the whole of the body there pretty much were opposed to this, but said that they didn't plan to come and speak because they thought that all of your minds had already been made up and it would be a waste of time. I hope that's not so. I had a friend who moved from the North Hills to try and live in the city, a residence that had no parking, and she only lasted one year because it was too difficult for her to park off-site or away from her home and carry her groceries, and then she moved back to the suburbs. We need to have parking. You know, to say that it is not so is, is, you know, it's against common sense. A lot of people need parking, especially if you're elderly or if you are someone with a disability. I also want to speak against the density issue where density reductions were tried in the 1960s, and most of those highly dense structures have been torn down. They're not better, it's not a better plan to have higher, denser, and no set backs required so that people do not feel that they are actually in a home. Things that are lower level do work better. Consider proposals individually, so people who live in a proximity can have an input, not just having things done by right. If you want to propose work for Oakland, and this works there, it may not work everywhere where there are more students who do not have cars there. Please look at the vacant properties that need redone, not the most desirable expensive properties for affordable housing options. One approach for every neighborhood is not the best way forward for everyone. Each neighborhood has unique conditions to be considered. One size does not fit all for all neighborhoods. If enacted, these policies would be harmful to the quality in Pittsburgh's closely built neighborhoods. I ask that you reconsider and revise your bill. You were asked, "Who are you for?", by one of the members here speaking, and I'm asking you to seek to serve all the sectors in our population and not just consider one sector that is above all the others. They all need to be considered. And I thank you for your time. I know it's difficult, and I hope that you do not pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Dave Brannigan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I know it's been a marathon of the day. Thank you so much for hanging in there. My name is Dave Brannigan. I'm the Executive Director at Lawrenceville United. I know there's been a lot of things thrown out today. I just want to encourage everyone to take a deep breath and, I don't know, bring things back down to earth a little bit. Some of the things I've heard today are just really incredible to me, particularly these allegations that IZ is going to be an extinction-level event for Pittsburgh, lots of, you know, confident assertions about how IZ is going to kill development. I mean, we fought for IZ in Lawrenceville because we want, we want to build housing. We want to welcome new neighbors to our neighborhood, and that is exactly what we're doing, and we want to, we want to do it for everybody. We want to provide opportunities for low-income neighbors as well as neighbors of all incomes. And that is exactly what has happened, and I got to say, like, a lot of the catastrophizing that you're hearing today, we heard this back in 2019 when we were passing it in Lawrenceville too. And I remember several of the developers here in Lawrenceville coming out and saying, "And you're never going to be able to build housing in Lawrenceville again after that." Well, we've had six development projects now come through the pipeline. The reason why none of those developers are here today is because they're doing just fine. The housing is getting created, and it's providing 116 units of affordable housing, much-needed affordable housing for our neighbors. All of the national research that Proz in Pittsburgh cited today is ludicrous. The national research is not on their side, and please, read the PCRG report that we co-authored. You can look at our citations. You don't have to take my word for it, and compare it it against theirs, they are not using, the data does not support their case. Many of the best empirical research shows that IZ, when it is funded, which ours is, and when it's mixed with other offsets like density bonuses, actually increases housing production. We took a very thoughtful approach to this policy, that is the goal, it is achieving that goal, I believe. Multiple, you know, studies have been done to calibrate it to our local market, and I challenge any developer, any of the building trades that spoke today, if you have numbers that show that IZ is killing your project, show them, let's see the numbers, and let's have a genuine conversation around this. But this is just a lot of catastrophizing around something that I really think is not as radical as people are making it out to be. This policy's been around for, you know, decades, it's been studied ad nauseam both nationally and here in Pittsburgh, we've been talking about it for 10 years, do we really want to keep talking about this for another 10 years? I agree with all of the Pro Housing Pittsburgh folks that we do need to move on to other issues, we do need to tackle other zoning restrictions, permitting reform, like, there are many other barriers to housing that we can and should be working on, and this inaction that we've been stuck on for 10 years does not benefit us, so let's move on and let's pass this thing finally.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record, you'll be given one minute to speak. Any speakers? Any speakers? Seeing no speakers, we allow members to give comment. I'll simply thank everyone who participated in the public hearing. Is there any other member who needs to say anything? Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I want to thank everybody who came today. You know, obviously, a lot was said, a lot of testimony. And I have a lot of notes on what was said, I know everyone's tired, but I do want to point out that we have to, first of all, if this were, if today and the planning commission hearing that happened, you know, when this got a positive recommendation, right, from our planning commission, if today or that hearing were, you know, elections, right, referendums, the vote would have been overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly to pass this bill. So that is clear, right, just on the numbers of turnout, and that's how we do elections, and, you know, in theory, we are here to represent our constituents who elected us, so. But if you look at the rooms, and this was the same with the planning commission, if you look at the room, in favor of this bill, we have people who spend, you know, and we know these people, right, it's here on council, we see these folks come into these chambers all the time, we see them at actions that we do throughout the city. We have seen housing advocates, we have seen advocates for, you know, our unions, our workers, we have seen advocates for our seniors, for our immigrants, transit advocates, food justice advocates, environmental justice advocates, disability rights advocates, racial justice advocates, folks who come out to support violence prevention, folks who come out to support our incarcerated population, folks who come out to support our, you know, to advocate for our homeless. These are the people here in Pittsburgh, these are the helpers, these are the people in this city dedicating their lives and their time to uplifting the most vulnerable and making sure that our city stays welcoming and can be a home to all types of people, not just, you know, young white professionals. And on the opposing side, you know, you have the developer community, you have the Pro Housing Pittsburgh crew, which really only showed up with like 14 people, I was a little surprised David Vats does a little better than that normally, but, you know, whatever, maybe people are getting tired of it. I do want to speak to our friends at the building trades. Since when has the developer community cared about you and your workers? Since when have the people who are focused only on making top dollar cared about you? You have been fighting, I mean, that is, that's why you exist, right, is to make sure that your workers are getting the best, are getting well-paid for the work that they do, are not getting undercut. I agree, Steve Mazick, he was at the beginning, he was at the top, so, he's probably having dinner now, but he came and he said that we're not doing it enough, and he's right. There's a lot that we could be doing at this table. Almost every development in Pittsburgh gets alerted, that's a tax abatement. We could make it so that every tax abatement requires prevailing wage. We cannot legally require, of course, because state, we cannot legally require union labor, right, we just can't do that. But we could be doing more to support you. But you are on the wrong side in this fight, because the folks here who are advocating for affordable housing, they are also advocating for workers, they are also advocating for jobs, they are advocating for a Pittsburgh where you can live and work and be happy and grow your family without a college degree. We don't need a Pittsburgh where you have to be working for Google making 6K, or, you know, six figures a year. That's not the city we want to build. You know, and, you know, and, you know, on the opposition side, we saw fake numbers from people citing their own discredited studies that, you know, and it's schlock gets published in the, you know, Trump endorsing union busting Post-Gazette, right, no surprise You know, and it's, and we hear people citing a rent decrease and building booms in Austin, Texas, Austin, Texas, without mentioning the total land availability there, and the fact that they have an influx of like 60,000 people a year, a year, in Austin, Texas. And they ignore the fact that the next three cities down that have seen rent decreases, Portland, Minneapolis, and San Diego, that those cities, they have mandatory inclusionary zoning, right, just like we want to do. But they don't mention that, because that's, that's not what they're trying to sell. You know, and, and, and keep in mind that there have been endless, I mean endless, good-faith attempts by members of this council, by the mayor's office, by the housing justice community, to bring this handful of anti-IZ developer folks to the table, right, to sit down and say, "Show us, you say it doesn't pencil, show us, let's sit down, let's literally run the numbers." They do not come, they do not want to sit down and actually open the books and take a look. And it is easy to get out here and tokenize the black community in your messaging, even, even when you have zero interest in those communities, and that is what the, that is the one thing that grosses me out the most about the Pro Housing Pittsburgh crew, is the way they tokenize low-income people, working people, struggling people, as if they have even a single person like that in their group. You know, and, and, and it's easy to sit back with zero professional or personal expertise in development or otherwise, and say that clearly, you know, all these longtime Pittsburgh community members and activists who didn't go to CMU and have, you know, they have really good intentions, but, you know, at the end of the day, I'm the smartest guy in the room, so let me tell you what you need for your community. And that's what this Pro Housing Pittsburgh, Pro Development crew are here to do. This is not about building just more housing, this is about building affordable housing in the neighborhoods where Pittsburghers work and go to school and get health care, where they eat out, where they go to the movies, because we don't want to just build playgrounds for the rich, and that is what has happened in some neighborhoods, that is what we are working on, on, on stopping in neighborhoods like Lawrenceville, and we can, and we can proactively do this around the city. Taxpayers are investing tens of millions of dollars every year in affordable housing in this city, and developers have ample subsidies in addition to height bonuses and the parking minimums, you know, you know, and the lot size changes. This is simply a case of the wealthy and the powerful not wanting any type of restriction on what they are allowed to do. And mark my words, we kill this IZ, and next, it's going to be weakening our building codes, and next, it's going to be taking out our stormwater requirements, because, oh, they're too hard, right, it's going to be these arguments about how stairwells aren't the right thing, even though we have buildings that burn down in our city, right? It's going to be about how we shouldn't have to make landlords, like, have their apartments be safe, we don't want rental registries, oh, 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 that just makes it harder for us to build, harder for us, you know, we represent the people of this city, not the developers. So, you know, I just, this is such a no-brainer for me, this is such a no-brainer for me that we pass this, this inclusionary zoning. And as someone said, if it turns out to be a disaster, whoa, it was a disaster, we find out in 10 years that we made a huge mistake, then we tweak it, as other cities have done, right, there's cities all over the country doing inclusionary zoning, we are behind the times. And, yeah, I agree with Dave Brennigan, let's, let's pass this, let's move on, and let's start working on the other things in our zoning code that do need to be fixed, and that do, you know, so that we can make it easier, our PLI processes and all that stuff, we're all on the same page on that. So we can build more housing and we can build more affordable housing. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Any other member? Councilwoman Gross? Well, if you'd be willing to...
There we go, here I am.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If you'd be willing to give your comments from this seat.
Oh, are you leaving now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, I apologize.
Thank you.
I will be right back, here we go.
I have to go move children around the city, so. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you all. Now that I am chairing, I will call on other members who want to, and I will save my comments to Heather Hennup next. Councilwoman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, well, let me just start, I wanted to spell any notions as to some of the speakers, many of the speakers had said, and even Councilwoman Warwick had just said, "This is about the rich." I doubt that anybody at this table, I doubt any of these speakers grew up more poor than I did. My family re-rented until, until I bought my own house when I was 28 years old, so I've never owned a house. I'm not beholden to any developers, I know the building trades are not beholden to any developers, so that notion as to, like, this is for the rich and powerful is just silly. I think we all have the same, you know, the same goal here, we just got different philosophical differences as how to get there. So, and I want to start by telling you this, okay, and I've said this before, council members have heard this, when inclusionary zoning came up for the very first time, it was in Councilwoman Gross's district, in District Seven, it was Lawrenceville and Bloomfield and I think just those two neighborhoods originally. Polish Hill was added. Oh, Lawrenceville, I'm sorry, right, right. Isn't that, what did I say? Okay, started with just Lawrenceville. Okay, so, I'm, I never feel like government should get in the way of private business, I just don't, I think it just muddies things up. But in this particular case, I voted for it in these two neighborhoods, and I voted for it because I saw what was happening there, it was like on steroids, I mean, it was developing, you know, one day you're going down the street, there's a 60-unit joint going up, and you come back down, there's a 100-unit joint, so I felt like it was being overdeveloped, I really did, and I felt like we had to hit the brakes there, so I voted for it, and I gladly voted for it, and I still maintain that that was the right decision. I still feel like, you know, to kind of pump the brakes in certain areas, in this case, you know, District Seven really needed it. And I will tell you, I think the facts and the data has shown that I was right, I voted for that to stunt development, and I think it has, I think it has, I'm speaking, please, I have the floor, right? So, it has, it has stunted it, all we have to do is look in Lawrenceville, all we have to do is look at South Side and the Strip District, they are moving to other areas because they can't put it in their budget. But as one of the speakers, Chris Roslow, as you said earlier, you were one of the first speakers, he had said, "The developers will find a way to fill the gap." And since the building trades are here, still, I'm going to tell you how they fill the gap, by cutting you out, by cutting organized labor out, which has built this city. And these organizations, these companies that are coming from California and Texas and all over the country are coming here to Pittsburgh, building our projects, leaving with that money in their pocket and spending it elsewhere, they're not spending it here in the city of Pittsburgh, like our building trades live and die here, okay? I spoke to all the trades, I spoke to Greg Bernarding this morning, I spoke to Kenny Bradbin, I spoke to all my friends in the building trades here today, they're adamantly against it because, just as Councilwoman Warwick would say to you, you know, she can't understand why you would be against this, and you're on the wrong side of it, keep in mind this, right, there are now three companies working on three different projects, affordable housing projects, none of them are using our organized labor. You know why? Because that's where they filled the gap. They decided to cut our organized labor out and do it cheaper, so, we're, we're cutting our workforce out in order to afford the affordable housing. That's just, I want to speak for the trades on that, and, and I know how you all feel, and, you know, I know it's frustrating to hear, like, that you're, you know, in cahoots with the developers. These, these folks have nothing to do with developers, Barb, they really don't, they care about jobs, they care about their jobs and their wages, that's what they care about their families, they send their families to our supermarkets, to our stores, to our restaurants, and our, and our schools. The people who are now building affordable housing in the city of Pittsburgh are not from Pittsburgh, they're not paying, they're not paying a living wage, they're not paying, you know, union wages, so, so they've essentially cut out our workforce, and we see it's going to happen, and the thing that's going to go citywide, no, that is just beyond me, I, we can't let that happen. Every project, it will essentially kill our labor unions, and I don't think any of us want that, these are people who are from Pittsburgh. We want people building Pittsburgh who are from Pittsburgh, and we want them to make a good wage, like our local unions do. And it's clear as can be, and there's no argument here, this is not, this is not make-believe, this is a fact. Franjo, I'll, I'll name him, the company now working in the Strip District on these affordable homes are cut out labor, they're bringing in companies from all over the place, and they're not from Pittsburgh, so, that, for me, you can always count on me, okay, for that, and, and thank you for being here, and I spoke to Greg this morning, and we're going to make our voices known in this before we vote on it, it's, it's not right, and for somebody to say you're on the wrong side of it, you're on the side of your family, and you're on the side of jobs and a good living wage, and anybody against that, I'm sorry, is on the wrong side, not you, so. Let me just say also, I don't know, why don't we just keep it the way it is, right, okay? I voted, I was just stressed how I voted in Lawrenceville, in Bloomfield, because it was being overdeveloped, I felt like they were just going to mow out, mow down every rowhouse and put up, which they probably would have if we didn't probably instill this there. But if that forces development towards me in the South Hills, which I have very little development, I'm for it, I will tell you, or South Side, or the Strip District, why, why don't we just keep the status quo, I think it works really great. And quite frankly, I'm insulted when I vote for council members, what they stress was very important in their district, but then you go turn around and say, "Oh, we think we know what's best for you too, Anthony, in the South Hills." Rob Bosco spoke in favor, but Rob, I appreciate your comments. My district, if anybody knows my district, we're not ripe with development, we don't have developers lining up at our door, I have very little development, okay? I'm trying to attract development, not detract development, okay? Citywide, inclusionary zoning is wrong, because one of the speakers said it best, every neighborhood is different, we are not Bloomfield, we are not South Side, we are not Lawrenceville. I want development, I need development, I really do, and you're going to essentially kill development in my district. I have a major project on Brownsville Road that depends, Carrick depends on this, right? I know the developer is going to back out if this goes through, so, therefore, one, you know, it just makes no sense to me, I don't know why everybody's insisting, why this administration, why council members are telling me what's best for my district. I believe council members know what's best for their district, that's why I voted for inclusionary zoning in certain districts, because I felt you were right, okay? I'm telling you, I'm right too about my district, I want neat development. By doing inclusionary zoning citywide is a huge mistake, you'll chase developers away, at least for my district, I have a hard enough, I can't attract them as it is, right? So, throw that monkey wrench in it and forget it. So, you know, the whole thing with affordable housing, we need to take a whole different approach, I got to tell you, I don't, I don't like the idea of forcing developers, I'm not a big developer fan, I don't have, I'm not cahoots, I'm not financed by developers, none of them have business in my district, I will tell you, so, I have no dog in this race, I really don't. But, you know, when we spend... But, you know, when we spend, this city has invested, I want to say, I, I can't even tell you how many millions, over $100 million of money that we could have used for buying vehicles, we could have used for many essential needs that this city has, right? Just, just in the past couple of years, okay? Over $100 million. We had the Housing Affordable Act. Uh, you know, I don't know how much we need to do to realize that we can't buy our way out of the whole affordable housing crisis. We can't, okay? We're going to throw money that we need for essential things, and we've already done it. I didn't vote for it, but you know, this council voted for it, and I have to accept it, and now here we are. We can't even run vehicles. We don't even have ambulances and fire trucks to get to you at this point. But we put $100 million-plus dollars into affordable housing. By the way, spending a half a million dollars a unit to build, in what world does that make sense to anybody in this room? I just, I don't even, I can't even comprehend it, honestly. Um, so, so we keep throwing buckets of money into affordable housing, and quite frankly, I feel like we're getting nothing in return. Yes, we got some units from the IZ in the neighborhoods. Yes, okay. Small token for a big price that we're going to pay citywide. I would be fine with keeping it the way it is. And if any one of these council members comes to me and says, "My district really needs it." If Councilman Wilson says, "Northside is crazy being developed," and you want inclusionary zoning, I'll be the first one to vote for it, okay? I would expect that respect out of council members. That's what I gave, and I, I expect it out of, uh, the members for my own district. So, I will be putting an amendment in if this thing, you know, next week that exclude my district at the very least, uh, because, you know, it's just, just doesn't work. It's just common sense. Has nothing to do with, you know, who, anybody's in cahoots with, whether you're rich or poor or black or white. It's common sense, okay? Um, I, there are many things I agree with, eliminating the parking permitting, uh, or eliminated parking requirements. Permitting. Subdivide lots so we can build smaller homes on, two or three smaller homes on one lot. Uh, tax breaks. We, we give them now, but bigger tax breaks in order to incentivize affordable housing. Zoning, zoning. That's, Corey, that's where we need to incentivize developers, as evil as some people may think they are, and, and as the good doctor said, it's a capitalist country here, and they're capitalists, and they're, they want, they want the bottom line. They want to make money, right? And we can do that with the right zoning, with skipping through this crazy permitting process that we have. All is very doable. By forcing their hand to basically build two free units, they're going to cut into our labor force, and that's unacceptable. So, I would encourage the building trades, we'll be in talks to come down Tuesday. Uh, we got to make our voices heard in this, uh, you know, there's so many reasons, unseen reasons, that costly reasons, and this is one of them. I'm talking hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars in wages that are going to another state, okay? They're going to come here, they're going to build, and then they're going to leave. And they're going to spend very little money here. They might go out to eat once in a while. But basically, they're here to work, complete that project, and leave. So, I want our building trades building this city, and I want them doing it at a prevailing wage that they deserve. That's very important to me. It should be important to all the city because these are our neighbors. These are the people that live here. So, so if you think it's okay to have out-of-towners come in and build this city at the, at the behest of our building trades, then okay, you could tell them that, but I won't. Um, yeah, so, you know, for, for what we pay for one affordable unit, $500,000, we have over $100 million in this, and we have a vehicle fleet that's falling apart, uh, just ridiculous. We need to reexamine the entire thing as to where we put the money, why we put the money, and stop dumping millions and millions of dollars in, we have, whether it's City of Bridges or five other organizations that build them, and they have their executive branches, everybody gets paid. You know who ends up losing in the end? The city does. We're going to be spending a half a million dollars for one affordable house. Does that sound right to anybody here? That's, that's crazy. It's, it's insane. So, anyway, if we really want to do affordable housing, we do it ourselves. We have big, we have the building trades that will help us do that. Yes, we have to manage it. I know we don't want to manage properties. I don't want to be responsible for managing the properties or the city to have to be. But that's the only real way to build true affordable housing, other than the zoning, permitting, parking, and, uh, you know, things that we can help that aren't going to cost us money, okay? So, anyway, I've been clear about it. I, I, you know, I'm not shy about talking about it. I, I think we all want the same thing. I want affordable housing. I was never privy to it as a kid. My family wasn't. So, you know, I speak, again, from the poor white kid from Beachview, okay? So, uh, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Coghill, anyone else? Councilwoman Strasburg?
To be brief, we've been here for a while, four and a half hours, I think. Uh, I, I want to thank everyone who came out today, truly. Um, I had been thinking about this ahead of time and talking to some people and thinking, you know, while we have been wrestling with this housing zoning package for many months now, um, just because it has, it started out in a different body at Planning Commission doesn't mean we haven't been talking about it and studying it and attending the task force meetings for 10 years, for the 10 years that others have. We've been thinking about it for a while now. I think I've read every article out there about inclusionary zoning across the country. I've studied other cities. I've talked to experts. We've had the post-agendas. We've, um, um, we've heard, we've heard from, from people, and so while, you know, I went into today believing that I wasn't going to hear, learn, hear anything that I hadn't heard before, I value everyone's voice, and I'm glad that people came out to, to share their, their thoughts and opinions and, um, introduce some new ideas into the mix, truly. And, um, I have, um, seen myself quoted back to myself from a different meeting, council meeting, where I said, you know, "Let's move on to IZ, let's get it right and get it done." And I firmly believe we are in the "let's get it right" phase of this. Um, and I, I value the work that, um, has happened up until this point, and, um, I look forward to continue to work with, continue working with council members, with labor organizations, with, um, Mayor's Office, developers, Housing Justice Table, to get it right. Thank you.
Councilman Charland?
Thank you. Uh, I will also be brief. I have a whole long sheet of comments I wanted to make, and, um, I'm going to skip most of them here. Um, but I, I do want to address something that came up kind of, uh, earlier, I don't know, hours ago, um, where a woman from the audience saw me kind of giggling, uh, with, you know, Councilman Coghill here. It was, uh, related to a comment that made of, of, "When's the last time a council member has looked at a rental unit?" And I, you know, I would like to remind everyone here that I am the only renter on council. And, uh, you know, this isn't something that is an academic exercise for me, this is a very real thing. Um, I'm trying desperately not to be a renter. Actually, just like a minute or two ago, my mom sent me another house to look at, so, uh, but I don't have, you know, a wealthy spouse or a second source of income. I sometimes drive, drive Uber, but that's a, that's about it. So, this isn't a exercise for me in, you know, making sure that wealthy developers make more money. I don't have a whole lot in common with them. I have much more in common, um, with the, the folks in the blue shirts here, and I, you know, I want you guys to know, you know, it was an honor to stand with you, and we passed, you know, right to council, and, um, you know, I, I want to be able to work with, you know, the folks, you know, the, the John Hancins and the, uh, Dave Bragins of the world, making sure that we're making life better for renters in this, in this, uh, region. I hope, you know, Dave, uh, you know, I know that you're a councilman outside the city. Maybe one councilman to another, we can work on passing a tenants' bill, a bill of rights in this region. Um, but for me, you know, I think we're going to have to find a way to trust each other's good intentions here, and that we, we believe that we want to make rent more affordable for all of Pittsburghers, um, and, and invite people in, you know? I think it's important that part of this, uh, EMB movement that, you know, a lot of people have addressed, we've talked a lot about, our, we've heard a lot about why people from other states are coming in and telling us what they, they think and what worked there. A lot of them have been displaced from bad policies in other cities. They want to make sure we don't make that same mistake here. That's a, a large intention from that group. Um, I hope that, you know, that the Housing Justice Table can see the good intentions in that. As I see the good intentions in you, I, I believe that you want housing to be more affordable for those at the bottom end of the, the income spectrum. I believe that is, that's your intent. Um, I want to be able to work together to fi, make the finely crafted policy that could make that work, you know? We heard a lot about Austin today, um, and Austin is kind of this like crazy situation here, because as, as Councilwoman Warwick brought up, they have had an influx of 60,000 people and their rent has gone down. We don't have an influx of people. We'd be so lucky to have 60,000 people move into the city and our rent go down. We don't have that. So, you know, with, and I also, well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not fact-checking it anymore, but I, you know, I, I, there are a lot of other things that I, I would like to say about other points here, but I do hope that we can find a way to trust each other's good intentions and move forward with this policy, and really work to make sure that housing can be in abundance and be affordable for everyone in Pittsburgh, regardless of whether, what your income is. So, that's my only intention here, and, um, you know, uh, as long as I'm, I'm a renter, I'm going to be fighting for renters, and hopefully when I'm, I'm not a renter here soon, I, I, I know that I will still be fighting for renters, because it, it means a lot to me. So, thank you.
Any other members? Councilman Wilson?
Thanks. I feel compelled to say something. Well, thanks, everyone, for coming out today. Appreciate all the different groups that, uh, put together their advocates and supporters to come out today. It was very helpful to hear, I've been writing down, I'm sorry, very helpful to hear from everyone, been writing down a couple pages in this notebook, the new strategy I'm trying out. And, uh, I thought it was useful because there's definitely a lot of, uh, one-liners that people were using and different points that everyone made about IZ, uh, whether they were for it or against it. And I thought it was pretty impactful, uh, to see, uh, that in writing for me. And I, you know, I think there's a lot, um, I think there's a lot we can learn from, uh, um, you know, from what we currently do, and so I continue to explore, uh, those, those, um, those programs that we already have, and try to understand how something like this could work, uh, you know, in terms of inclusionary zoning, because, um, you know, I think it is critically important that we, uh, just work on programs that can work and work on zoning that can work. Uh, and I'll, I'll make a mention to the, the 30 million that we, you know, the big bond that we did, like you were saying, you...
62 million with the interest.
62 million?
With interest.
Yeah. That money, that 30 million is still sitting there, uh, in the bank account, because, uh, you know, just how complicated projects are to, to get done. And so I think it is very important to, you know, look at what the URA is doing, uh, with that program, because that's working directly with developers that, um, seek to provide housing for 50% AMI. And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's, um, important, you know, we talk about open up books and seeing what, uh, you know, how developers can do it. So, that's, that's definitely, uh, something that we should be mindful of as we move forward with this discussion. And I, I do want to make note of, um, just a lot of the numbers that, that I hear about inclusionary zoning, and they seem to be, some seem to be, uh, quite large, and some seem to be quite small on actually what's out there. So, it would be good to get a real good handle on it, because I just, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to see numbers, uh, for, you know, from city planning or, um, you know, numbers that, um, are based on permits, because like, you know, people can't live in permits. So, I just want to make sure that, um, that we have a good frank discussion about what's currently existing and, and how that program's currently being monitored. Uh, I think that would be good for all residents, because we don't want, if we create a big, uh, tax abatement program for this, you know, we don't want developers to walk away with our own tax dollars that we could have had if we're not going to really understand who's, who's, um, who has access to that affordable housing. So, and that program will cost money to, to really make sure that, uh, the, the leasing offices are, are doing what they should be doing. So, it's, uh, a good conversation, a good, um, you know, conversation for, to have in terms of how we can, I mean, ultimately, we'd be creating a lot more bureaucracy for development in the city of Pittsburgh if something like this would go forward. And in those cases, we just want to make sure that it's, it's all, uh, going to be taken care of, and actually the people we seek to serve are being served. So, looking for that conversation. Because I, I just want to say, because I don't, yeah, I just want to say, because I, round out that, uh, that last sentence, because I, I don't believe that the current bill, which is ultimately unfunded, is, um, you know, in any fashion, the, the final bill that would be passed. So, thank you.
Any members for second round?
I'll take my prerogative, um, chairing now, to say that I think we, we, um, I always want to thank people for taking time out of their lives to put time, effort, and thought into engaging with the legislating that we're trying to do, um, and also to come down or to be online and to be with us, and to, to be brave enough to share your voice, um, for, to, to help us inform our policies. Um, and, um, we will be, I'm sure, having more to say, so I'm not going to try to say everything. Um, everyone knows that, you know, Lawrenceville worked on this and really envisioned this for themselves, um, for many years, probably starting in about 2015. Uh, we know that there were other task forces around the city who are working on it. We know there was official task forces here at the city, um, working on it, and then follow-up task forces to those task forces. There was a lot of thought and policy, put it into the first inclusionary zoning overlay, the IZO, that started in Lawrenceville, expanded to Bloomfield and Polish Hill, and then, um, as, as the planning director has presented, the beginning into Oakland. Um, the numbers I have in front of me, which do include building permits, Councilman, but I'd be happy to put you in my car right now and show you the building that is already leasing, that is one of the building permitted ones on Butler Street that's 280 units. It's massive, right? So, I don't think any, right, it's massive. Um, I don't think any of those permitted numbers that I have in front of me are, um, you know, projects that haven't started, right? And, and, um, the Dalian one that's over 300 units has broken ground. It's not near completion the way the one on Butler Street is, but the one on 39th has also broken ground. Um, it shows that there's far more development inside the IZO footprint than outside since 2019, which belies your understanding, Councilman Coghill. We can debate on it, we can go and look at the sites, and you can decide whether you think all of the, the building, the building, um, you know, uh, machines running around and the girders going up counts as a real project or not a real project, but they, um, it's something like, you know, only 7% of the landmass that is, you know, you can build multifamily on in the city is inside the IZO, right? You know, if it's zoned for multifamily, you could actually build 20 units on it, um, then 7% of the multifamily zoning in the, in the city is inside the IZO. And so 93% is outside the IZO. And since 2019, 22% of the apartments built are inside the IZO in the city, and only 78% are built outside. So, that adds up to 1,427 units permitted, like, built, completed or under construction inside the IZO, 1,427. And outside the IZO boundaries since 2019, 5,054 units built or permitted in a construction. So, I, I think you cannot say, we absolutely cannot say that it has stopped development, you know, in Lawrenceville. Um, it has, I mean, uh, it, they can, development continues in Lawrenceville, um, probably It has, I mean, it, they can, development continues in Lawrenceville, probably at about the same rate, but now, with people paying, about 100 people so far, paying much, much lower rent, and being able to live there, who wouldn't have been able to live there? And as you've heard me say a million times, the problem was that we were already losing affordable housing, that you couldn't see, it wasn't in a big tower that came down, or a big low-rise apartment complex like Penn Plaza that was imploded, it was those, you know, probably thousand homes that had affordable apartments in them, that got flipped into single-family. And so, it was an invisible, you know, displacement of low-income people, but it was real, and people felt the loss of their neighbors and their loved ones who were forced out or couldn't afford to move in, right? I heard from a lot of grandparents, I heard from a lot of grandparents who were upset that their grandkids couldn't rent or buy in Lawrenceville. And so, it was a long time in development, so, and as you pointed out, as many members pointed out, it is not the only thing we are doing, so, for the members of the public who think that this is, this is not the beginning of our, or nor end of our affordable housing policies, funds that we've allocated, and other kinds of changes that we are making, but especially where there is new development, which is not in every neighborhood. This, this kind of high, you know, purely high-profit market development tends to be in the neighborhoods that have transit, jobs, food access, that the Supreme Court calls neighborhoods of opportunity. And so, I believe that the decisions of the Supreme Court put the responsibility on local governments to make sure that we are not only doing affordable housing where there's no assets and resources for people, that we also need to do affordable housing where there are assets and resources for people, and that inclusionary zoning is one of the ways that we do that. And so, that, we'll still, I'm sure, have many more things to say, and so I will, I will stop my comments there, and I'll offer one more time if anyone has second round, and if not, I will declare this meeting adjourned.